All right, thank you. Well, to all the members of the public that are coming on, welcome this evening. We have just, council has just returned from a closed session and I will ask our city attorney if there is any reportable item.
The answer is there is not any reportable items tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perick. And so we will go on to our regular session. I will call the regular session of the city council to order and council member Funk, would you please lead us in the pledge to the flag?
Please rise and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council member Funk. Roll call, please.
Council member Daris.
Here.
Council member Borbo.
Here.
Council member Funk.
Here.
Mayor Protim Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Well, if you're watching or listening to the council meeting tonight, welcome. We're glad you're here. If you would like to speak at the time that's set aside for community forum or during any public comment for any one of the items on our agenda, you can call 805-538-2888 to provide public comment via phone. When you call, please let us know which item it is that you'd like to speak on. And once again, that number tonight is 805-538-2888. Now, if you're on the webinar, you'll notice that at the bottom of your screen, there is a raise hand feature. And so when it comes time for community forum or public comment on any of the items on our agenda, I will open that community forum and the public comment, and you have the opportunity to press that raise hand button and we will call on you that way. So those are all the ways to participate this evening. And then we've also received some things via email. So I would ask, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Funk and a second by council member Borbo, and we will waive the reading and full of all ordinances that are appearing on this agenda. And the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the council votes. Roll call, please.
Council member Funk.
Yes.
Council member Borbo.
Yes.
Council member Daris.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
We have no presentations this evening, so we're on to our consent calendar. Consent calendar contains items that are considered routine in nature and non-controversial by city staff and can be approved in one motion unless there is a member of the council or public that wishes to comment or ask questions. And so what I would like to do is I've received some public input and I would like to poll and have a discussion around item two on the consent calendar, the Title IX Planning and Zoning Text Amendment changes. And I will ask my council members if there are any other items that you have questions on or wanted to pull. You're muted, Trumps.
There you go. I'm not sure on item. Those are norms.
Six.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Rochelle, if you had a minor correction to make on that.
I do.
Yeah, so I was pull item number six for a clarification.
Excellent. So we've got two and six pulled. Anything else? All right, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on or pull an item outside from number two, which is the Zone Text Amendment changes, or number six, which is our council norms? I'm seeing no hands. Is there anybody on the phone? Luke?
There is none.
And then I will ask our city clerk if we've received any email comments into the record regarding any consent calendar items.
We have not.
Okay, I think we did, I think we did for number two, correct?
For number two, yes, but for.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve one, three through, and one and three through five?
I still move.
A second.
A motion by Mayor Protim Newsom and a second by council member Borbo for numbers one, three, four, and five. Roll call, please.
Council member Borbo.
Yes.
Council member Daris.
Yes.
Council member Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Why don't we start with item six?
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to make a brief clarification. I had received some questions and regarding a item that we're suggesting to change. We're looking at page eighty-eight of the staff report on typical items for individual determinations include, and the wording in the staff report says, "Request for council input from other council members on upcoming council committee agenda items." The term council committee was a little ambiguous. It could be construed to mean those committees that the council appoints. What we had actually intended are those committees where council members sit on the committee, such as IWA, SLOCOG, those types of things. What I would suggest is that we change that to request for council member input from other council members on upcoming agenda items for committees that council members sit on.
We say serve on.
Serve on. There we go. That would work perfectly.
Excellent. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right. I will ask, are there any members of the public wishing to comment on item number six regarding council norms? Seeing none, Luke, anyone on the phone?
Not for this item.
And Laura, do we have anyone who has emailed regarding item six?
We do not.
Okay, can I get a motion on item number six?
I'll move approval of item six with the minor correction noted by the city manager.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Borbo, second by council member Funk. Roll call, please.
Council member Borbo.
Yes.
Council member Funk.
Yes.
Council member Daris.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am. Motion passes. Thank you. And so with regards to item number two, the issue that I had gotten some feedback on, and I would like to ask staff some, some questions, and then we will open it up to public comment. This is regarding nine dash three dash, forgive me, because these this gets are nine dash, let's see, nine dash six point one zero three, the accessory storage, and particularly on page forty six, item G, the scrap and junk that we talked about. And so I think the concerns that I had heard had to do with, you know, one that maybe we've too broadly described scrap and junk, and what if you have a business owner who maybe has some things stored at their residential property? You know, let's say, you know, a tractor, a generator, some sort of equipment. And how do you balance that between, you know, you've got some working equipment, which, you know, clearly wouldn't be scrap or junk. You also don't want to have a business owner that is running a business with a bunch of equipment out of a home that isn't suitable for a residential area. So how do we, how do we balance this? And do we have something here that, you know, are there any potential unintended consequences? And so I would ask Director Dunsmore to maybe speak to that.
Yes, thank you, mayor, and good evening, council. Those are some really good topics. In general, when a commercial business is located in a residential zone, there are a whole set of limitations, and there's different code sections on that in regards to what we call a home occupation. And it has its own limits to what they can store to property, such as commercial vehicles and all of those things. This particular reference is purely referencing trash and junk, not storage of construction materials used for an active project, not talking about parking of operable vehicles that we're using for a business. Now, there are regulations that do talk to those issues, like I mentioned, in our home occupation regulations and in those sorts of things. But in general, in a residential zone, these regulations are designed to protect a residential zone so that it looks like a residential zone. And these commercial uses, where you've got larger commercial vehicles parked more than one, or you've got large storage of construction materials or other things, the intent is that those locate in a commercial zone, so they don't disrupt the normal activity in a residential district and change the aesthetic character of that. So this particular code section was designed simply to take away a loophole that's there today. We don't have any limit to outdoor forage behind a fence in a residential zone today. And the idea is to establish some limit when storage is behind a fence, but this is really regarding scrap junk and trash and things that are not actively being utilized either for construction of a house or that are part of your normal residential occupancy. Now, I will point out that I think after further discussion and looking at this section very closely, I think we've had questions about, does this pertain just to residential? Does this pertain to commercial? Is it all over the city? I think we could do a future clarification that does say that this pertains solely to residential. We do have separate sections that talk about commercial, and we did recently last year adopt specific storage standards for commercial, bringing those more into compliance with our. So I think in the future, we might want to talk about scrap and junk on residential properties. If we could only add that language tonight would be a great clarification, but that was the intent of this particular section.
And well, that might be a question for the city attorney. Well, so first of all, director, is this in a section that we are talking strictly about residential, so it's implied? Or might we need to make that clarification?
After looking further back, it is a section that talks about accessory storage in general throughout the city. There's multiple sections under accessory storage, some which pertain specifically to commercial, some which pertain particularly to residential. And our existing code, when we went in to make this change on the limit, didn't have that description, whether it's residential or commercial. However, when doing the change, the intent was residential, since there's a different section that talks about commercial. So it was inherent that it was residential, but it's not as clear as we'd like it to be in terms of what we're talking about here. And I think that's, that's, that's a major discrepancy that I think needs to be clarified. The fact that we're clarifying that in the record can allow us to create an interdepartmental policy and even a city council policy that this is what we're going to use this section for, but it'd be a lot cleaner if we just said scrap and junk in residential districts.
And I think we did verbally say that at prior meetings when we had this discussion.
We did.
I would bring on our city attorney, if that is a direction that we decided to go in, because that was our intent, can that be added tonight? Did you already say no? Being that that was our intent and we're actually making it, you know, if, if the original thought is like, it's everything, we're actually lessening that, so we're not increasing the, you know, the the, the, the regulation on anyone.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, what your intent was would be reflected by what you did, not what you thought. So if you wanted to add text to the ordinance, you would need to bring it back with the text added and do another first reading.
I will add attorney, that we did have in our presentation that it was for residential zones. I don't know if that makes any difference on the screen that we presented the night we did the introduction at both the planning commission and city council.
Yeah, unfortunately, a staff report's not an ordinance. Under the law, you can make a clerical correction, but this doesn't sound like it's clerical to me.
Okay.
Council member Borbo.
Though, I mean, since our intent is clear, though, then this is a matter of enforcement. Can't we just essentially, I mean, leave this as is? Hopefully next year we fix the language, but in the meantime, you know, we're not going to enforce this provision on commercial properties till we fix the, you know, fix what we clearly intended.
The answer is that you have discretion whether to enforce or not. You don't, the law doesn't require enforcement. It authorizes enforcement. So the answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
So and then you can come back at a future date and amend the ordinance to add what language you think you need to.
And I think we, in that sense, then, based on your answer, I think it makes sense to wait the year. You know, when we, when we do this on an annual basis as opposed to dragging it back before for, you know, a first hearing and a second hearing, et cetera.
And in the meantime, council could give direction that we're not enforcing this on commercial. This is intended for residential only, which is often what we will do with, with, you know, various regulations like this. Council member Funk.
Yeah, if we're done on this one, I had a similar question on this ordinance in, on page forty-nine of the report in section nine dash six dot one oh six, residential accessory uses, whether, where I was contacted by someone who was not clear whether we were talking about accessory limit, that these accessory structures might involve accessory dwelling units or not. And our entire discussion was that these, these were not habitable structures. We're talking about garages and sheds and workshops and yada, yada, not accessory dwelling units. So it can, can I get a clarification from staff for the record that section nine dash six dot one oh six does not apply to ADUs or accessory dwelling units to, to structures in which someone would be living?
That is correct. We have an entirely different section, nine dash six. I don't have the exact number, that details specific standards for accessory dwelling units that are different than the standards here, which are intended to be for agricultural accessory structures or small, you know, workshops and non-habitable structures. It doesn't say that specifically, so I think it's a very good clarification to have on the public record. This is not intended for habitable structures, but for true accessory garages and workshops and things.
Great. So when this comes back a year from now, perhaps we could either in section B of this section include that the statement not including habitation, you know, at the end of that sentence, or include a statement at the very beginning of that section citing the, much as we do for agricultural accessory uses, citing accessory dwelling units are covered in, yada, yada. And if, if that's a plan, I can certainly, you know, wait for a year for this to come back.
Well, and actually, I wonder, if we could ask our city attorney, could we put in here tonight, you know, C-section, you know, X, Y, Z for, you know, zoning codes related to accessory dwelling units?
Well, now you're changing the code in the second reading, which is something you can only, you can only change for clerical reasons.
Wouldn't, you wouldn't consider that a clerical reason just to say, see this section like an arrow pointing that way? No?
No.
Are not residential accessory uses defined somewhere as to not be habitable, you know, things other than habitable dwellings?
They are, but it's not perfectly clear. That definition does include the definition of a studio, which was really intended to be art studio, workshop studio, not a studio apartment. So that in itself needs clarification. I was looking through that today, hoping that that would solve our matter. Really, though, it needs to, we do need to have a reference here to residential accessory dwelling units, which used to be called secondary dwelling units, so they weren't confused. But when the state changed its definition, it tends to cross over into this definition now, which hence creates the confusion. So we will need to add a further clarification to that, just to imply that these are only non-habitable accessory structures.
Right, so we've got a couple of things for our list for twelve months from now. All right, if there are no other questions, I'm going to open up to public comment. Seeing none, if you are attending and would like to speak, you can raise your hand using that little icon at the bottom. And if you're on the phone, you can press star nine to comment this evening. So Mr. Oslin, you are first, and we will have the three-minute timer, so you can see how much time you got left. Welcome this evening.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope everybody can hear me, because I'm lame at this computer stuff half the time. I need to pull the section back up, so bear with me just a second. Okay. Some of the things that also come to mind to me in section G of what we're speaking about is the outdoor storage of scrap, junk, and miscellaneous articles. I would, I think it's broad, but it's also the intent. And right now, our council and our city staff, I think the intent is great, but when we have changeover, I'm a little worried about it. So the things that come to mind is what are we going to consider junk and scrap? A large woodpile, a wheelbarrow, trailers parked on property? That concerns me. The next thing would be the definition and term that's in here that says parked behind a screened area. So that doesn't mean a barbed wire fence or a wired fence anymore. That is saying not visible to any part of the public, and I differ with this. I'm on two acres. I have neighbors that are on acreage, and I drive by some, some things I don't really like, but it's their property. And I think we're starting to violate some property rights here in the way that we are, even though we are a complaint-driven city. What happens if you're having a neighbor feud and they call in a complaint? Now you have issues. So that's the stuff that I'm wondering if we can pull this section completely out of accepting it tonight, go back to the drawing board and bring it back to council, you know, in six weeks or eight weeks, and rectify this rather than waiting a year or saying we're not going to enforce it. So those are really my questions. You know, I drive around the city. There's some eyesores, definitely, but there's some that aren't eyesores. And I'm not so sure that we're not broad enough, so that's my, my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oslin. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? And if so, please raise your hand. And Luke, are there any callers that are wishing to speak on this item?
There are not.
Okay. And I will ask our city clerk, I know we did receive at least one, but anything that you have received to be any public comment on this item, if you could read that into the record for us.
Sure, I'll read the one we've received. "I write to urge the city council to reject the update to the planning and zoning as it relates to ordinance section nine dash six dot one zero six, which deals with residential accessory structures. The proposed change would permit residential accessory structures to be equal in size to a hundred percent of the area of a property's principal structure, double what is permitted now up to three thousand square feet and be exempt from any discretionary review. This is wrong, particularly since setback requirements are only five feet, it would permit enormous structures to a butt of a neighbor's property without any review. This would change the character of neighborhoods and impose burdens on adjoining properties. The current system works just fine. Do not change it." Rick Derivan. And that is the only comment we've received.
Thank you. And seeing no other hands raised, I will close public comment on this item and bring that back. So with regards to Mr. Derivan's points on nine six point one oh six, I think, did we, hopefully we did respond to him, because I believe that he's probably looking at our previous previous draft that we were looking at during the first reading where we changed it to two thousand square feet, and we substantially increased the setbacks. So has that been communicated to him?
Yes, the updates, a screenshot of the updates were provided to him, and he did acknowledge receipt of those. And he hadn't seen that update.
Excellent. Thank you. Because I think all of us agreed with him, we still wanted to be able to simplify this process, but we also realized that we could be creating some unintended consequences. And so we did make those changes during the last meeting. I will ask our community development director, Mr. Dunsmore, to address the items that Mr. Oslin brought up, kind of what do we consider junk, scrap? You know, you talked about a wheelbarrow, a woodpile. How do we say what is junk and scrap versus somebody's treasure trove?
It's very difficult to get a perfect description of that. I'll tell you right now, we don't currently have any complaints that are on file that we're chasing in the city in terms of scrap and junk. Generally, what we would view as scrap and junk is pure trash, pure refuse that's been stored on a property. For example, you know, someone demolishes a house or structure and leaves a pile of refuse there. Someone has bits and pieces from remnant vehicles piled up or rusty metal, things that are purely items that need to end up in a landfill. Certainly, a lot of people have certain things that they collect, and there's certain garden supplies. And there's things that are accessory to a residence that you deal with with farm animals and equipment and all these things. And we're in a rural area, so we respect all of those things in our rural area. But what we're talking about here is purely just refuse that needs to go to the landfill. And it's something that we would have to analyze if we received a complaint and we had to go deal with something, that we would have a tool in our toolbox where we could enforce the code. And right now, we're missing that tool, and someone could have several acres of storage of miscellaneous items, and we would not be able to follow up with that. And so, again, reminding the public and the council, too, that we are not proactive in code enforcement in this nature. We're reactive. And right now, we are not reacting to any complaints that are associated with this kind of topic.
And so when we're talking that we want a screened area not visible, we're saying that if you are going to stockpile refuse, it needs to be screened. So we're not saying that if you've got a pile of wood that you're using or a wheelbarrow or some, you know, some tools and things like that, we're not saying that your yard has to be kept pretty like Disneyland or behind fence. We're just saying that if you've got a pile of trash that is exceeding this square footage, it's got to be screened from your neighbors. And if it's bigger than a thousand, that's not acceptable.
That's exactly it.
Okay. Anything else that I see our city manager that came on, anything else you might want to address?
No, I, I think you cleared it up. I just wanted to make sure that we all understood the current code does require that scrap and junk can be maintained as long as it's behind a six-foot-high solid wood or masonry fence. So the example of the barbed wire or the, the see-through is currently not allowed if we revert back to the old code.
Okay. Any questions from council members? Council member Borbo.
Yeah, I see the last sentence of that paragraph says, "The storage of scrap and junk as a principal use is subject to standards of nine six one three one, which is not something we're changing tonight, so it's not in our report." But in other words, if somebody says, "Oh, I use this stuff," that's a separate kind of a purpose, right? Because we're talking, as you kind of indicate, if not refuse, at least, you know, stuff that we're not using. I mean, it's a pile of, you know, broken stuff, you know, that sort of thing. Not stuff that you're actively able to use.
Yes, there are other standards that talk about different types of storage. There's standards that talk about vehicles or standards that talk about all sorts of different things that you have. This is purely related to refuse.
Right. So if a neighbor complained, said, hey, you know, Phil Dunsmore has a big pile of garbage, you know, junk and crap in his yard, and we, you know, code enforcement goes out, he could say, oh, no, no, I, I use this stuff, and could kind of demonstrate an argument to why it's not. And so, yeah, I think we're, we have to have a tool to use, and I think we have good latitude there for good judgment to apply.
Yes.
Council member Funk.
Yeah, wouldn't that statement that, that council member Borbo is referring to, "The storage of scrap and junk as a principal use is subject to the standards of section nine dash six dot one three one." Wouldn't that apply to the principal use of the property? So, you know, I am running a junkyard as opposed to the principal use of the item in question? As being junk, as being usable or not?
Yes, actually, now, now that you mention it that way, when they talk about principal use, they're talking about the principal use of a property. This property is designed for the storage of X. Yeah, yes, and that would be something that would fall under a conditional use permit, for example, when you're doing a a commercial land use on a residential property, which in rare circumstances can occur.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And so to, and so thank you for that clarification. And then to council member Borbo's point, the same answer applies, that if someone can say, hey, I use this, here's how it's used, this isn't junk. And that's all, those arguments are already being made, and we already use that in code enforcement.
No, but I guess my Susan comment sounds like it's more correct. So I mean, if I were to say, hey, I refurbished rusty wheelbarrows into garden art or something. So I mean, if I were to say, hey, I refurbished rusty wheelbarrows into garden art or something. And that's why I have 50 rusty wheelbarrows sitting over here. That's not what we're talking about principal use, but it would be an argument that this is not trash.
Correct. So it can go both ways. I mean, I, yeah, I think that that stipulation is accurate. The stipulation about principal use is accurate as well.
Any other questions from council? My recommendation would be that we move forward as is and if in the next year's update, because this isn't something we're going to come back and do in six to eight weeks. I think it's a, a minor tool that we can use right now if needed. And if there are some changes to help clarify this, that is what we do every year. And I think we're all happy to look at that. So if we're good on that, I would entertain a motion on item number two on our consent calendar.
I'll move approval of item eight two.
A second.
Motion by councilmember Borbo, second by councilmember Funk. Roll call.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Daris?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Newsom, Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are on to updates from our city manager, Ms. Ricker.
Thank you, Mayor. Did my screen come up for you? Fantastic. New this year, the Atascadero Lakeside Wine Festival Committee has teamed up with the Chamber of Commerce to launch a Passport to Fun. This new event being held in lieu of the traditional wine festival will kick off on Saturday, June 26th at 2:00 PM at the new zoo garden event area at the Atascadero Lake Park. The Wine Passport will provide the holder with complimentary tastings at 18 wineries, four breweries, two distilleries and one cidery that can be visited between June 26th and December 31st. Passport holders will also receive complimentary corkage fees at participating local restaurants and discounts at local hotel stays. With thanks in advance to the Wine Festival Committee, a portion of the proceeds from the Wine Passport event will go to support the Charles Paddock Zoo. And information can be found at visitatascadero.com backslash events. This is going to be a great deal. All of those tastings, six months to go through them. You can enjoy a couple every weekend and get through it. So that's exciting. Hurry and get your tickets there. We have a lot of other exciting things while we're talking about it. We have some new businesses that are now open. So we're happy to announce that the following businesses are now open in Atascadero. Bramble Pie Company on Entrada. Phil went and had their chicken pot pie and keeps mentioning how good it was. He was going, have you been there? It's great. You got to go. So please, everybody, go check out Bramble Pie Company on Entrada. We have Mia Winery and Tasting Room on Traffic Way. Poisoned Apple Cider and Craft Tavern on El Camino. Colony Mash Brewing on El Camino. And Wild Fields, the kitchen will be opening 100% beginning June 17th for everyone to enjoy their great line of craft beer. So this is exciting. It's nice to see things opening up again and please come out and support our new businesses, support our old businesses, support these businesses that have had a really tough year. We appreciate you patroning the business. To help everybody patronize our local businesses here, the chamber is going to do a shop local bonus program. The Atascadero Chamber Commerce is promoting a new shop local program for the local merchants. And starting now, Atascadero shoppers will be rewarded with a $20 gift card to participating local businesses if they submit receipts equalling $100 or more of money that they spent at selected local businesses. So this program gives everyone another great reason to shop local and more information can be found at atascaderochamber.org. Great deal, another great deal, $120 for spending 100, you're going to get $120 worth of local products. So that's wonderful. We have the ribbon cutting celebration at the Plaza coming up. So come celebrate along with us when we host an official ribbon cutting at the Plaza located across from the Sunken Gardens and adjacent to the pedestrian tunnel on La Plaza. On Wednesday, June 16th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM, we'll have a live band, some tasty quick bites to enjoy. And there will be tours of La Plaza. I know there's a lot of people out there that would love to see the interiors of those buildings. So they will be giving tours as we kick off this great new area of town. The Plaza Ribbon Cutting Celebration will be held during Farmer's Market, which is from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. So there'll be additional reason to come down and join in the fun. Speaking of Farmer's Market, the 2021 Farmer's Market Summer Sizzle Series begins on June 30th and will run through August 4th, except for the Wednesdays that fall during this, the run of the Midstate Fair. So Summer Sizzle will be held in conjunction with the Atascadero Farmer's Market here at the Sunken Gardens each Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. Each of the events will feature a live band, wine, beer or cider tasting, a chef's special with tasty menu samples and a recipe made with a fresh produce that can be found at the market. So please come on down to our Farmer's Market. By the way, the fresh fruit right now is absolutely incredible. I shouldn't tell everybody that way. There's more good fruit for me, but I, I can't resist. It's absolutely good. Things are starting to reopen here after COVID, so our Colony Park Community Center will reopen on June 25th. We have been holding some events at the Pavilion. City Hall, the outer doors have been opened throughout COVID and the access to the lobby has been by appointment or if you call. We will be opening up that a little bit more. We still encourage all contractors or those that want to meet with a city staff member to call to make an appointment. That way you're insured that a planner will be there and be able to spend the time that you need. And always we can do a lot of business by phone and so that is still encouraged. But things are opening up. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ricker. Councilmember Daris.
Thank you. Rochelle, I, I didn't catch if you had mentioned the cost of the wine festival, the wine tasting passport. If you could mention the cost and the estimated value of that.
I believe, I, they did not have the cost in my notes, but I believe it's $65. And then it goes up a little bit, but I will, I will look that up really quick. At our Chamber of Commerce, what's that?
Pipe in and tell us.
Okay.
Luke, can you get Terry on really quick to answer that question? Terry, you're muted.
There I am. Okay. So $65 is the early bird and you have until June 18th. For the passport, it is a $500 value. And also after June 18th, it'll go up to $75. You'll be able to buy them also at the kickoff at the Atascadero Zoo Garden over at Atascadero Lake Park on June 26th as well.
Thank you.
And apparently you can buy lunch for a zoo animal and get donations too. So please do that while you're buying your passport.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes. Do you have an update on SB 438?
Yes, I do have an update on SB 438. SB 438 is Senator Laird's bill regarding helping the city of Atascadero get repaid the $1.4 million owed to it by the, the former redevelopment agency. That bill did pass through the Senate unanimously, 40 to zero. Want to thank again Senator Laird for all of his leadership. It is now in the Assembly. Senator Laird is still working there and has been joined by Assemblyman or Member Jordan Cunningham, who's also working to help get that bill through. It goes to the Local Government Committee, Assembly Local Government Committee tomorrow. It will also need to go to the Housing Committee and to the Appropriations Committee before being voted on the Assembly floor.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
So now we will move on to community forum. And this is the portion of the meeting that is reserved for persons who want to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda this evening and over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers will be limited to three minutes and we ask that you state your name for the record before making your presentation. And any comments made during community forum do not become subject for us to discuss this evening. We will allow a maximum of 30 minutes for community forum. And when you do come on, we will have the timer going so you can see your three-minute marker. So I will start by asking if those here in attendance, if there's anyone wishing to speak during community forum, if you could raise your hand or if you're on the phone, press star nine. All right, I am seeing Mr. Jeff Oslin. And anyone else that wants to, please raise your hand. No need to wait. Raise your hand and we'll call on you as we move. So.
Good evening, council, once again. I'm just going to give a brief update on the citywide yard sale that took place last weekend, benefiting the Joy Playground. The maps that were put in the newspapers were phenomenal. They broke it out by zone. So between the newspapers, Tasker News, Paso Press, and of course, my wife, Kate Oslin, that did all the hard work to get this off and running again. We had over 130 participating residents in the garage sale and we made over $2,500. So thank you.
Wonderful. Good to hear. Always love it when the community is raising money for fabulous project, product, projects like Parents for Joy. So thank you. And thank you to Mr. Oslin and his wife for all the hard work that they put into supporting that organization. I am not seeing any other hands, any other attendees who would like to speak. And Luke, are there any callers wishing to speak during community forum?
Yes, I have one caller, Gary Kirkland.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Kirk.
Yeah, I'm on the phone. Yes, hi. Yeah, I'm calling about, and I don't have the bill's number in front of me, but there's a bill in the legislature to force people who have septic tanks to have them inspected every three or four years. And the people doing the inspecting are the guys in the septic business. And if they find anything wrong with the septic tank, they can then force the owner to pay thousands of dollars to fix it. And they have to do this maybe every five years. And the people doing the inspecting are the ones going to be doing the repair work. And this looks like a slush fund and a way to make septic tank repairs live on the Riviera. They're going to make so much money at the expense of people who own septic tanks. Since this affects both cities and counties, and I already talked to the Board of Supervisors, I think the city should look into this and try to protect the septic tank owners and oppose this bill in the state legislature. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Any other callers, Luke, who would like to speak?
None at this time.
All right. And if there are any attendees on the webinar, you can raise your hand. I'm not seeing any. I will go to our city clerk and ask for any public comment we've received via email.
We have quite a few that have come through, so I will start reading them. The first one is from Ronald, Ronald Crawl. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Moreno and councilmembers. My name is Ron Crawl. I'm the CEO of North County Recycling and Compost, a locally owned and operated facility located in Paso Robles in Creston, California. As you start to develop plans and ordinances to comply with SB 1383 effective 1/1/2022, North County Recycling and Compost has been preparing for SB 1383 and expanding our ability to support Slow County in complying with this new regulation. We recently invested in solar energy to expand our available resources and reduce our carbon footprint. Additionally, we have an approved facility expansion at our La Cruz Way location in Paso Robles that will start this year and allow for additional capacity, greater processing and redesigned controls, allowing us to become a larger partner in this effort, hopefully a larger partner with the city. North County Recycling and Compost recycles 100% of our processed food, organic and green waste and 85% of our construction and demolition material and can positively impact any SB 1383 strategic plan through the items below throughout the North County, adapting SB 1383 policies and support use for inbound volumes to be recycled. Procurement, support SB 1383 required product procurement, compost material, 50/50 gypsum blend and soil amendments by recycling and selling into the circular economy strive for in SB 1383. Infrastructure development. Both our facilities in Paso Robles and Creston, California are permitted operating and have over 250-plus tons per day of available capacity for use in complying with the SB 1383 requirements. All the above listed efforts will maximize volumes, limit transportation costs and trucking distance, lowering the carbon for all involved. I look forward to any questions accommodating your future tour requests and working with all as we navigate the SB 1383 rollout and build our circular economy with a focus to develop priority relationships for inbound and outbound volumes. Okay, the next one, to whom it may concern. As a voting taxpaying citizen, I want you to know that I was horrified at the city's lack of respect for our officers who put their lives on the line for us every single day. The officers who deal with the homeless, thugs, gangsters and other riffraff, the city appears incapable of getting a handle on. This lack of respect has been noted and I personally will be voting accordingly at the next elections. Shame on all of you. That was from Denise DeCock. Dear City Council, I find it offensive that someone in the city of Atascadero removed all of the decorations that support our men and women of Atascadero Police Department. As a resident of Atascadero and a businessman of Atascadero, I find it important that we stand up and support our law enforcement who are under attack throughout this country. Our law officers put their life on the line to protect our community and this is shown by the recent death of San Luis Obispo Police Officer Benedetti Luga. For some reason, some people seem to think that supporting law enforcement is racist or against certain groups of people. We need to stand against this way of thinking and do what is right. Our men and women of law enforcement protect all people of all races, especially here in our community of Atascadero. Shame on whoever took the, took the authority to remove these decorations of support. What's next? No flying of the American flag. Respectfully, John Whitford. The next email. Hello, Atascadero officials. I know it may seem like, well, the ribbons have been up long enough to honor our police and that it is time to remove them, but I think in general, the citizens of Atascadero want our police force to feel appreciated and supported every day. I live right next to the police station and the ribbon's decor have never stood out as an eyesore to me. Please let us keep showing our boys in blue that they're important to us. Alyssa Newman, New Nam, sorry. This next, as a resident in Atascadero and a daughter of a former police officer, it saddens my heart to know that the community police support decorations are going to be removed. During these crazy times, I feel it deeply important for our community to show support to those who keep us safe day and night. We need to celebrate our officers and our community should be able to express our support to them. Please do not take down the supportive decorations. Sincerely, Amanda Tremblay. Here's the next one. Good afternoon. I am writing as a concerned citizen who owns property and resides in Atascadero. I have to share the extreme disappointment my family feels in hearing the signs, decorations and efforts put forth by the community in support of our law enforcement have been removed by the city of Atascadero. I feel confident to say that this was a poor decision by the city to keep the peace with those who wish ill on our officers. Instead of standing behind the support your community is showing, especially during a time of grief and loss, you have removed thoughts, feelings and demonstrated to adults and childrens alike that their supportive actions do not matter. What a sad message to send your community. One year ago on June 2nd, 2020, my son and I were disgusted with the events that were unfolding in the US, causing many to turn their backs against those who protect us daily. On that day, we decided to share our support for our officers in a different way. We made signs sharing our appreciation and taped them up at Atascadero PD. Those signs remained through June into July and were eventually torn down by people passing by. When they were torn down, more were added by other citizens on our community and they have. When they were torn down, more were added by other citizens on our community, and they have remained up until the last week or so, when the city decided to remove them. My questions are, one, why were they removed now? Two, what has changed since last year? Three, where is your support for those who are working to protect all of our citizens in our community? I proudly support our men and women who put their lives on the line every day. I have spent hours with my own child to teach him about the importance of law and order, what sacrifices are made each day when those officers wake up to put on their uniform and leave their own families to protect ours. The missed holidays, family events, long shifts, the sad situations they are witness to, and the daily fear of not knowing if they will be coming home at the end of their shift. Even though all of the challenges we see daily throughout the country for those in uniform, my son still wishes to become an officer to serve and protect those around him. Maybe our city board and city manager should show, sorry, should show as much courage and respect as he does to support our men and women in the blue who put us first. Sincerely, Selena Berry. The next one does not have a signature. It's ridiculous to remove the decorations that support our law enforcement at the Atascadero Police Station. It's wrong and should be stopped. Support for local law enforcement is the bedrock for our community. Without respect for law and order, there will be none. The next one. Please consider allowing us to support our support and respect for the APD by decorating with flags and blue ribbons. I feel it is extremely important to set this example of respect to our younger generation. Thank you, Joyce Wilkins. Sorry, this one was an attachment. Atascadero City Council, as a resident of Atascadero for the last seven years, I am disappointed that the city has chosen to remove the signs and decorations residents put up to support the Atascadero Police Department. The police are more important now than ever, considering that our southern border is wide open and our tyrannical governor has released over eighteen thousand prisoners back into society due to the pandemic. Crime is on the rise in California, and the police are our last line of defense. The city of Atascadero should be supporting their police officers, not taking the bits of support they get from the community down as they are mourning the loss of their, of one of their own. As a resident, what the city did speaks volumes to me. It was a cold-hearted move on the part of the city and downright disgraceful. Our police officers deserve better from the city of Atascadero, and I ask that the person who made the decision to have the direction, director, excuse me, to have the decorations taken down and be held accountable for their cowardly decision. Thank you, Kim Paul. What now? We live in a communist socialist city, a city where we are not allowed to express our support for our police force. What happened to our First Amendment rights? This is outrageous. Why does the city believe that it is okay to take away our community's voice and expression? Stop the suppression of voices that support police officers. This is Holly Parsley. And the, the final one we received. Oh, sorry, there's one more. The city's use of the sign ordinance to silence the community's support of our police who protect us and who are taxed dollars fund in addition to your jobs at the city is a violation, violation of our constitutional rights. Your use of the sign ordinance to remove ribbons and decorations at the police station is not interpreted consistent with the requirements of the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States and the Free Speech Clause of the, of Article One of the California Constitution. The city is practicing censorship on its citizens. We love our law enforcement. The city's actions are shameful, especially after we lost Detective Benedetti. Take a stand for your people. Amanda Hawkins. And then this one came in. I'd like to comment in regards to the pro-law enforcement decor that was removed from APD very recently. From what I understand, the decor on the fence outside of APD was in place for about a year, refreshed multiple times throughout the last year, never knew it was an issue nor violated any rules. To have it taken down one week after the procession of slow PD's fallen detectives seemed to be in very bad taste timing. I view that in recent times, law enforcement as a whole has been in the media limelight and has been attacked and portrayed in negative ways. This should in no way represent all law enforcement, especially in our local communities. I feel all law enforcement needs our support in all ways possible, as they took an oath to serve and protect our communities. They deserve our respect and praise. As a community, I feel it is our constitutional right to express our positive and tasteful support in as many ways possible. I request that the city council manager and Public Works Department reassess their decision to remove such decor. Thank you, and this was from Jeff. And those are all the comments I have.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. And one last time, I will ask if there's anybody in the, in the webinar here, if you would raise your hand. And Luke, is there anyone on the phone?
There is not.
All right, seeing no other public comment, public, a request for public comment, I will go ahead and put Co's public comment and bring it back to council and staff. One thing, just with regards to what Mr. Kirkland brought up, we might want to look into that. You don't need to address that tonight, but it would be great to see if there's something that we need to be aware of there. With regards to the comments regarding police and decorations, I will hand that over to the city manager to talk about. But first, I want to say what I really love is that we have so many members in our community, not just here tonight, who have emailed in, but I know throughout Atascadero who support, honor and appreciate our law enforcement and, and law enforcement everywhere. So it is very heartwarming to see all of the support that they have from you and our community. And I want to say that there are a lot of ways that all of us can support law enforcement. And, you know, whether it's volunteering, it's sending cards and letters, you know, donations. I mean, there are numerous ways that all of us can contribute and support and show our respect of them, and we appreciate that. So many of you do that, we know. The K-9 Foundation is, raises a lot of money because of business community members who do fundraisers and write checks to, to help that program. So many of you, the outpouring of support when Detective Benedetti was killed in the light of duty. So much support has come forward from throughout the county, Atascadero included. And I know that by our officers, it has been very, very much appreciated. I will say that we, as a council, one of the ways we support our officers is in our budget, quite frankly, and that is something that we're looking at tonight. When we put D twenty on the, on the ballot, we said to all of you, one of the reasons we were doing that is that we needed to, not to show support, we needed to tangibly support our police officers to help them do the job that they do. And you will see that tonight in our budget, that they really do take center stage because we support them and what they do, and we know how important that is to our community. But with that, I would like our city manager to address the, the issue of the, the flat, the decor.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and very well said. I, I really want to thank people for supporting our police department. The job that the men and women, the officers, the dispatchers, really every job at the PD are incredibly difficult jobs. And I think our police department does an amazing job every day serving this community. You know, it was nice to hear tonight and some of the letters, the amount of understanding and support for those police officers and, and what they and their families have to do every single day. And so, first of all, thank you. I want everybody to know that we do truly appreciate the support that the community gives our first responders. The city's sign ordinance does allow us to take down signs placed by the public, but we must do so in a manner that's consistent with the First Amendment. Under the First Amendment, when it comes to the public hanging signs or any messages on city property, the contents of the sign itself must be irrelevant. We can't look at the contents of the sign and determine, yes, this is a, this is a good sign, or this is a bad sign, or any of that. The contents of the sign or message are irrelevant. So if we allow signs to remain up that praise and thank our first responders, we must also afford equal access and protection to those signs that denigrate or demean our first responders and our public safety personnel. So it was with the express purpose of truly supporting our first responders that the city will not allow any sign or message to be placed on public property and will not allow it to remain regardless of the content. As Mayor Moreno also said, we do want people to express their support. These are tough jobs. We appreciate that support. Cards, especially homemade cards, cards made by kids are very much appreciated. Emails, small tokens of appreciation. And then please know that everybody, this is not taking away people's right to display those messages of support on their own property, their own homes, their own businesses. You know, the police officers don't spend that much time at the police station. They're driving around town. I know that they love to see some of those signs of, of support on people's properties and, and those thank you. So, please know that we do appreciate our police officers and that the city will no longer allow any signs to remain on city property. But that'd be happy to answer any questions.
Being that this is not an agenda item, I just kind of wanted to address the comments, so we won't go into any questions right now. But thank you. I think you did a thorough job explaining the, the policy. And again, thank you to the public for your support of our law enforcement. With that, we will move on to our public hearings. Our first one, public hearing B one, the Apple Valley Assessment Districts. I will go to council and ask if we have any ex parte. Councilmember Funk.
I have talked with two members who, residents of Apple Valley about their desires to have a different mix of services in the dressing landscaping.
All right, thank you. And I, for that, then I will move on to Director Jerry Rangel.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we do have three different public hearings for different districts. Tonight, I'll start going over some kind of common information, and then I'll go directly into each of those public hearings, if that works for you. Okay, so the council policy is that new development should pay for itself. Part of that policy requires developers to put in a mechanism to pay for items such as road maintenance and common landscape areas. Developers for Apple Valley, Los Lomas, Indiana had that option when they started this about two thousand and five-ish and selected to have assessment districts as that mechanism. This is not a general tax to the citizens of Atascadero, but only applies to those properties within each of these districts. CPI was used for all, the CPI for all urban consumers for the San Francisco, Oakland Hayward area from February to February for these purposes. For the three areas that we're looking at tonight, there are a total of six assessment districts. Because each, because of the assessment district law, each area is generally required to have two different districts, one for landscape and lighting and one for street and storm drains. A public hearing must be held to annually adopt these levies. And the general fund does contribute a small amount for public benefit in each of these areas. So, Apple Valley is our first public hearing. Am I okay to go forward on this, Mayor? Thank you. Okay, so staff evaluated the long and short-term costs, and in an effort to keep the budget lean, we're projecting or proposing that the levy stay flat from last year at five-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year for the street and storm drain district and nine-hundred dollars a year for the landscape and lighting district. And that is about fifty-one percent for the landscape and lighting districts of the maximum tax it could be, and sixty-eight percent of the street and storm drain district. And that concludes my report on this public hearing.
Thank you, Director. Do we have any questions from the council? Seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. If there's anyone on the webinar who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the icon at the bottom, or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine now. I'm not seeing any hands. Luke, do we have anyone on the phone?
We do not.
Okay, and I will ask our city clerk if we have any public comment to be read into the record via email.
We do. Let me grab them. Before approving the yearly assessment report and renewal, as a homeowner at Apple Valley, I would like to request a review of the agreement with regards to several issues. The landscaping in the common areas of Apple Valley is over fifteen years old, with many of the planted areas in various states of decline. While much of the common areas are kept tidy, there is a need to update, functionally improve, and simplify the landscaping throughout the neighborhood. The long-term success of our LLD will require anticipating repairs to irrigation, replanting, mulching, proper pruning and other good horticulture practices. Doing so can save water, reduce chemical use and save maintenance time. I don't know that the current assessment agreement provides any regular review of conditions or opportunities to make improvements outside of the under-promoted and/or non-existent annual meeting. The city needs to facilitate a phased master plan going forward so that a more proactive approach can be implemented for repairs, adjustments and improvements. I contacted the city with detailed information regarding these concerns on March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one. Happy to resend if interested. Although I received a thoughtful response from Councilmember Funk, I received no response from city staff. Thanks for your consideration of these concerns from our neighborhood. I'd be happy to help any way I can. This is from Rick Matthews. The second email received, as a homeowner in the Apple Valley subdivision, I would like to propose consideration of the following prior to the approval of the yearly assessment report and the renewal of any landscape maintenance agreement for Track two-four-nine-five. There are a number of issues throughout the development that require attention, but nearly all relate to the fact that the original landscape design placed rapid growth over long-term health, water conservation and the level of maintenance that would be required to preserve the development's visual appeal. At more than fifteen years old, it's time for the city to reevaluate what is currently working and what is not, and to come up with an updated assessment which involves a phased master plan over three, five, and perhaps even ten years so that the long-term health and aesthetic appeal of the landscape, my neighborhood, is preserved. A reassessment with a long-term view, serious annual or biannual reassessments by Public Works, and an updated maintenance contract that allows for prioritization of those issues requiring more immediate attention to be considered. For instance, the poison oak that has previously been limited to the riparian area, buffering the back of the park to the creek, has spread throughout the park. It can be seen within four or five feet of the walkway in numerous areas and within five or six feet of several of the picnic tables. Is anyone responsible for paying attention to these types of issues? Does the current assessment identify this issue and offer a solution? Does the maintenance contract cover remediating issues like this? In addition, I would hope to see more effort on the city's behalf regarding outreach to the residents of the Apple Valley community regarding the city's plan for how the LLD fees are to be used and any input they may have in that regard. Thank you, Jeff Foster. And those are the two comments received.
Thank you very much. And seeing no hands raised in the webinar, I will close public comment and bring it to staff. And I would ask Director Rangel if you're able to address those comments.
I will say generally, we are trying to walk kind of that very fine line between keeping the levy very reasonable for the residents and being able to maintain their, their district. Beyond kind of that general comment, I will pass it to Mr. Betts with Public Works, and he can address some of the more specific items.
Yes, thank you. Ryan Betts, Public Works analyst. First, I appreciate the comments tonight from the residents of Apple Valley. Those are always helpful. We are ongoingly meeting with our existing landscape, landscape vendor, if you will, at Apple Valley, looking at the sites, assessing what needs to be maintained, what needs to be improved upon. As Jerry mentioned, we are really trying to balance the cost of maintaining the facility and the area versus any types of improvements. Now, the current budget before you and the levies associated with that reflect that balanced approach. When it comes to specific needs such as potentially, you know, poison oak in the park area, I was not aware of that, and as soon as I saw that court, council correspondence come in, I immediately reached out to our landscaper. We're gonna meet on site tomorrow to look at that and see what remediation we have to fix that. That happens all the time. That happens all the time. And I can say that we do get emails in, and so does the landscaper on thanking the landscape company for addressing immediate issues, irrigation breaks, tree trimming, those kinds of things. In terms of a master plan, that would be a significant cost increase to the levy. And as we've noted in the past, previous conversations with the residents at Apple Valley, there is a strong sense to maintain that levy as financial, feasible for the residents as possible. And that's what the levy kind of reflects, really reflects a maintenance efforts of what's existing out there. And then does provide some level of improvements. For example, we're conducting some tree trimming right now in the Apple Valley Neighborhood Park. That's supposed to be completed on June 15th. So those incremental improvements come along, we certainly have some funding, but not certainly as much as some individuals would like. But again, that's based upon previous conversations from the residents to keep that levy in a very manageable way for their personal income. And so this levy and this proposed budget reflects those.
So Mr. Betts, I'm curious, if the residents got together and a majority of them said, hey, we would like to do a master plan, and that would end up costing, you know, let's say, you know, $1,200 a year. How would they, and I'm just throwing out an example, but how would they go about, you know, getting together, you know, folks to say, hey, this is what we'd like to do, so that maybe next year when this comes around, you know, that would be a potential, if the majority of residents did want to go in a direction such as that or another direction?
And that type of feedback would certainly be welcomed. The challenge would be trying to really understand if in fact the majority, it represents the majority. And we really, staff doesn't have a mechanism to understand if those are certainly one, two, three, or four individuals or the entire community at large for Apple Valley. But that being said, they can certainly get together, we encourage that with one voice, because that will help our conversations when reviewing kind of the ongoing maintenance needs and addressing those. The other thing that, outside of a large master plan, which we don't even really would understand the cost assessment until we've reached out to some folks and get a better grip on that. But really, it's not necessarily the master plan that would cost a significant amount of money, but the improvements that would come about from that. So there would have to be a really good understanding that if we implement such said master plan, that the levies would actually increase significantly and what that means for their personal kind of budget. But that being said, we can continue to provide our landscapers contact information. Many of the residents already have it, and so they can identify directly with them if they see any kind of ongoing issues or things that need to be addressed. They've been very well responsive to those needs, they're in constant contact with the residents to address those issues. But if anything larger and more, I would say aggressive in terms of maintenance improvements would warrant a significant increase in the levy.
And what would it take if residents wanted to, you know, for instance, say, hey, we really want to have control of this? They could potentially then form an HOA and have their own board and then really be, you know, in charge. And those people who are interested would get involved and that would remove the city from it. But the residents could really have the power to, you know, move forward in the direction that they would want to according to whatever rules they might set up. Is that how that would work?
Exactly. And I don't know the legal procedures to do that. And certainly Jerry can jump in if she'd like, but I would, it would take really, if that effort were to come to pass, it would provide the ownership back on a said HOA to help manage those costs and ensure that the landscape meets their particular needs. And then they could vote and set a budget and whatnot. Without that mechanism in place, staff truly believes that for the current levy assigned, that it's getting a really good bang for your buck, noting that there are going to be improvements. The tree trimming is one of them. Staff did take an additional analysis this year, knowing that there may be some improvements that need to happen at Apple Valley. The residents are correct, it's a 15-year-old district. And like anything, every so many years, it does need some, not just maintenance, but improvements. Think of your, you know, personal home, if you will, or apartment and whatnot. And so we've identified some improvements in the next fiscal year. Not to get too much in the weeds, no pun intended, but there's a lot of mulching that occurs in the general common areas out in Apple Valley. Right now, those are pretty thick and they spill over to the sidewalk. And so our maintenance folks are out there, you know, blowing and taking care of that. We've set aside some funds to do a pretty major replenishment of that mulch area. We think that'll help a lot with the aesthetics of that particular district. So we are listening to the residents, we understand some of the issues out there that have been proposed by some individuals about what that looks like and feels like. And we are going to address that in this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, I was just noting that I was hearing a bit of a disconnect in some of the comments in that what I was hearing from the residents is not that necessarily more money needs to be spent, but that thought needs to be spent to supporting a 15-year-old landscape as opposed to a brand-new one. And keeping doing the same things that you would do with a brand-new landscape is not good value for the money that's being invested and doesn't produce good results now that things are bigger. So you know, you need, so there's an opportunity, I was hearing that there's a request to spend the money more strategically and take the opportunity to have, instead of doing quite so much, you know, regular trimming or things that you would do with small, young plants, to be attentive to over time, you know, replacing or or taking off water from some of the larger plants. Because you have, you know, I've got a landscape that's, you know, 10-plus years old and we now have fewer plants in it because they got, the ones we have got bigger. And you just, you can make those adjustments. And what I was hearing is a request to have that be done more thoughtfully, not necessarily with a a big elaborate plan, but just some regular attention to what kinds of things might we need to be doing in the next few years and creating some savings in how the landscapes manage so that there's room to do that within the context of the levy that we're voting on tonight. Is that the kind of thing that can be accomplished in the dialogue with Public Works?
Great question. I think it can, depending on the spirit of what you're saying, Councilmember Funk, comes into reality. We often find the conversations where once, you know, a few folks may want that desire and then another, a couple other ones don't want to change anything. And then another camp maybe wants to do an elaborate kind of a plan, if you will. So we're trying to balance all the different perspectives by sticking to kind of what we've done over the last couple of years, which is really try to maintain what is out there. I will say that when plants do decay or die, if you will, they are replaced with drought-tolerant plants. We are absolutely conscious of our water use at each of the assessments, especially during this coming up drought, very dry summer. And so what you'll see a lot out there are drought-tolerant plants. And certainly if some die, we'll try to replace those with drought-tolerant plants. But in terms of strategic planning, I wouldn't, I would say that it really depends on what the majority wants to see out of their landscaping plan for the next couple of years. And that can take a lot of both staff time and actual direct costs to produce that plan, depending on the amount of public input we get and the timing of it. And that, those costs would be bore out of the levy as well. So that's why we've received additional conversations of the year to just simply maintain what we have, replace something that dies, and keep that levy relatively stable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. Any other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Borbo.
Mayor, you brought up a good point in regards to the ability of neighborhoods to accomplish this function through an HOA, which, of course, as I understand it, in the lakes, which two of our council members live, you know, has an HOA, is not part of an assessment district. And because they don't have to do things through a governmental entity, the city, they actually probably get things done substantially cheaper. And so I guess this question for Ryan is, and you're new to the city, so you may not have the institutional knowledge, but I think maybe Jerry does. Have we had that discussion with some of these neighborhoods that have assessment districts about, hey, you know, you know, this is not something that the city, you know, big government wants to reach in and take over everything. You know, you could have an HOA and handle this yourself. And granted, you'd have those issues that Ryan Betts referred to, you know, this set of people want to do this and this set of people want to do that. But it might be a lot cheaper and easier for the city as well, if people would pursue an HOA. And is that doable in the sense of ending an assessment district and going to an HOA model?
I think I can help out with that one. So we have recommended or not recommended, but offered that to each of the three different districts that that would be an option to go with an HOA over the assessment district. Now, if I were to go into research on how to do that and what do we do and what are the requirements and the steps, I would need to charge the district for that time, which they haven't requested, so I haven't gone to that step. But we have offered it. Oftentimes, there are members of each of these communities that are interested and oftentimes, they are not as interested. So it would take a collective effort to do that. And you're right, it's not cheap having the city do it. And they probably would get more efficiencies on their own with an HOA, but we just haven't gotten there yet with any of these particulars.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daris.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. I don't know if Jerry or Ryan want to answer this, but on the formation of an HOA in a development like this, would it require a unanimous approval from the homeowners? Because it would seem to me that you might have some that might not want it for whatever reason. And then it just creates, you know, problems down the road. But I'm just wondering what, if you know, if you don't know, you don't have to worry about looking it up. I'm just curious if you know if it requires a unanimous vote.
You know, I'm not sure about that. Like you say, I haven't gone far enough down that road to determine whether that is the case or not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, both Director Rangel, Mr. Betts. So if there are no other questions, I would look to my colleagues for a motion.
I'll move, we adopt the recommended actions, resolutions A, B, C, and D for item B1.
I'll second. We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Protem Newsom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Daris?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And on to item B2, the Dianza Estates Assessment Districts. And do we have any ex parte? I am not seeing any of my council members, including myself, who has any ex parte. And so we will turn it again over to Director Jerry Rangel.
Similar to the last public hearing we had, this is the public hearing for Dianza Estates. Staff evaluated all of the costs and is recommending that we, again, are flat levies for these. We are proposing $342.48 for the street and storm district for the senior housing area, $681.50 for the street and storm drain district for the single-family residential area, and $250 a year for the landscape and lighting district. And that concludes my report on Dianza Estates. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any council questions? Seeing none, we'll open up to public comment. If you're here live this evening, you can raise your hand using the icon at the bottom of the screen. Or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Luke, do we have any callers on the line wishing to speak?
We do not.
And I will ask our city clerk if we have any public comment to be read into the record on this item.
We do not.
Thank you. Seeing no attendees wishing to speak, we will close public comment and I will bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
I'll move approval of resolutions A, B, C, and D for item B2.
We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Protem Newsom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Daris?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. On to item B3, the Woodbridge-Los Lomas Assessment Districts. Do we have any ex parte? Looking at my colleagues, none of us, five of us, none have ex parte. So again, Director Rangel.
The levies for both of the districts in the Los Lomas area were increased by CPI of 1.56% when compared with the prior year. In 2017, we had a neighborhood meeting to discuss the issue of funding for the road maintenance in Los Lomas. The majority of the homeowners that were in attendance at that neighborhood meeting were very strongly opposed to contribute or set aside funds for long-term road maintenance. The proposed street and storm drain district levy of $407 is only for the annual operating cost and for periodic surface treatment, slurry seals of the roads. Residents were informed that in approximately 20 years, the roads will require a more in-depth road maintenance project that will require significant funding. The residents were also informed that the homeowners would be responsible for those repairs and that with the proposed levy at the $407 rate that we're proposing tonight and annually adjusted for inflation, there will not be sufficient funding for the road maintenance projects beyond the year 2032-33. Before fiscal year 3334, the district will need to come together to figure out how to fund future maintenance and periodic pavement rehabilitation that is needed to occur in fiscal year 2038-39. The estimated cost of that work is just under $1 million using current dollar value. A notice was recently sent to each of the property owners in the district, again, sharing this information. Staff has concerns about the long-term maintenance of the streets in this district and wants to make sure that, that every, wants to make sure that every one of the neighborhood neighbors has all of the details needed to make an informed opinion on this issue. Staff is also trying to compromise with the desires of the district to keep the near-term cost down, and thus is recommending the levy of the $407. And we're also recommending a levy of $208 a year for the landscape and lighting district for the upcoming year. And that concludes my report on Los Lomas.
Thank you. Do we have any council questions? Councilmember Borbo?
Yes, and I'll phrase it so it's not a question about the last two items. Is this the only district that is not, you know, is specifically not setting aside funds for long-term, more in-depth road maintenance?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. So the others are. Okay, great.
What would be that funding mechanism? They would, I suppose, try, just like any other non-city-maintained road, need to get financing, which can be challenging. I think it's tough for us to watch this happen because we see others that probably wish they at least had an assessment district in a way by which to go through and do this, or an HOA. Many that don't. And so we have those that do have it and they're choosing not to, and then kind of putting themselves in this position. Do they know what those options would even be?
You're right about that. And there are districts around the city that are on unmaintained roads who are searching for some type of solution. So we did have, back, I don't know, a decade ago or so, a solution. It was the Neighborhood Road Loan Program that we worked with one of the local financing banking institutions. Banking laws have changed since then, we are having a hard time finding a partner for that. So it was kind of the city So it was kind of the city stepped in and was kind of a helping hand in order to get neighborhoods on board so that they could get their unmaintained roads worked on. That's been complicated in recent years with the changes in the banking laws. So we haven't been able to launch that program again, and we just have been having a really hard time, other than everyone passed the hat, to get some type of a system for these larger projects.
Any other council questions? Seeing none, we'll open up to public comment. If there's anyone in the webinar that would like to speak, you can raise your hand now. And if you're on the phone, press star nine. We have V Pierce.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Pierce.
Thank you. My name is V Pierce, and I live in the Las Lomas community. I just wanted to say that, first of all, thank you to the staff for their report and for managing our district. I was there at the 2017 meeting when we discussed reducing our assessment fees. And that was because when we looked at the balance of our assessment, there was a surplus from previous years. And so some of my neighbors spoke up about spending down that surplus, and especially when the economy at that time was in a downturn, it seemed like a good idea. I was hoping that we would be able to meet in person in, you know, future years after that to discuss that issue again, because I do believe that I would like to save money and make sure that our roads maintain their quality and, you know, the quality of the roads are maintained. So I would be in favor of increasing just the assessment of our district in order to make sure that we do save enough to maintain the roads and the streets in our neighborhood. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Are there any other individuals who would like to speak on this item? And I will ask our city clerk if there's anyone who's emailed in. There is, excuse me, there is not. All right. Seeing no other public comment, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
Yes, I move that we approve resolution A, B, C, and D.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Newsom, a second by Councilmember Borbo. Roll call, please. Mayor Pro Tim Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Darius?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. And I would think, Ms. Pierce, for her comments, and if you do have neighbors who are feeling the same way you do, I would encourage you to bring them together. And maybe next year, things could change, but we certainly need the resident support to do that. That's not something we, as the city, can go wrangle everybody. We've been there, done that. So we could certainly use your support in bringing those together if there are residents with similar desires. All right. So now we are on to item B4, which is the Atascadero Tourism Business Improvement District Confirmation of Annual Assessment. And I will ask if we have any exparté. Councilmember Borbo?
No, I'm sorry, wrong item.
Anyone else? Okay, I will say I had a brief exchange with Tom O'Malley, who is part of the at-bid board and owner of Portola Inn, and of course, former mayor here. And he wanted to just say that he's very happy with the way the bid is working, how well the city and the bid, of course, the chamber, how we're all really working together. And he really encourages us to move forward with this. So very pleased with the efforts. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Terry Banish.
Evening, House. So thank you, Mayor Moreno. So we have two draft resolution assessments to review. The first will be for the outfit, and the second will be for the bed. So I will share the outfit screen.
Terry, I'm going to say your voice is a little on the warbly muffled side. And while we might be able to hear you, I don't know if everyone else can. Is there a way to bring a mic closer or do something to make you a little more clear?
I can be closer. Is that better?
That is better. Thank you.
Very good. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right, very good. So the city of Atascadero established the Atascadero Tourism Business Improvement District in this outfit to levy annual assessments on the parking and business improvement area in 1989, and by adopting Atascadero Municipal Code Chapter 16. And with that, the activities to be funded by the assessments and lodging businesses within the outfit are designated as promotions and marketing programs to promote the city as a tourism destination. It is required that the advisory board provide a specific report to City Council annually for the expenditure of funds derived from the assessment and are paid by lodging businesses within the city. These levies are adopted annually, and were provided in the annual report presented at the May 25 City Council meeting. The recommendation this evening is to adopt the draft resolution confirming the annual assessment for the Atascadero Tourism Business Improvement District for the fiscal year of 2021-2022. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. And I will say that really, since we approved this bid back in 2013, to see everything that, I'm going to say we, just as a city, because the bid is part of the city, even though they are hoteliers, it's incredible what we've been able to do with not a ton of money, right? You know, the funds are smaller in comparison to certainly some other cities. But I think as Mr. O'Malley said in his conversation with me, that we really, we work so well together with the city and the bid and the chamber, and we're able to really, it's like all the effort we put in is just amplified. And so it's been really nice to see that. And of course, Terry, you've been a big part of that. So thank you. And just to be clear to the public, as we're looking at this, this is not a tax on, this is not a general tax on the public. This is basically an assessment for people who stay at hotels in the city, and it goes to promote more, as we say, heads in beds. So with that, I will look to council and see if there are any questions from Ms. Banish. Seeing none, we will go to the webinar and to the callers. You can press star nine on the phone. Raise your hand at the bottom of the webinar. Is anyone wishing to speak on this item? And Ms. Christiansen, did we receive any emails to be read into the record? We did not. All right. Seeing no one wishing to speak on public comment, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
I'll move, we adopt the draft resolution provided.
I saw two hands and sort of a something, so.
I'll second.
All right. So we've got a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Darius?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. And on to B5, which is the Downtown Parking and Business Improvement Area Confirmation of Annual Assessment. And again, any exparté?
Yeah, this, I had a brief conversation with Josh Cross from the Chamber of Commerce today because they administer, help administer the funds. I had a question for him.
Thank you, Councilmember Borbo. Anyone else? All right. Seeing then, we will open to public com, oh, I'm sorry, open to public comment. Let's go to Ms. Banish for the report.
Okay, thank you very much. So tonight, we are also, oh, excuse me, one second. I'm going to go back to this. Out of presentation, sorry about that. So tonight, we're also looking at the adoption of the assessment for the Downtown Business Improvement District, or the bid, is what we refer to it as. And as shown here are the current boundaries of the district as part of the assessment. And you can see how we go to the north, to Rosario, along the 101, and to the south, over North Road, up to Capistrano, and right past Almeida Avenue, and nothing has changed as far as that goes. The BIA was established in 1986 and requires that the advisory board provide a report to the City Council annually for the expenditure of funds derived from the assessment paid by businesses in the downtown area in order to ensure adoption of the assessment plan from the beginning of the fiscal year. The report and resolution of intention were presented on May 25 at the City Council meeting. This also requires that the Chamber of Commerce, that serves as the advisory body and the subcontractor to the city regarding the bid. The informal committee of downtown business owners advises the Chamber of Commerce on expenditures and assists in the creation of the anthill visit. Here you can see the proposed expenditures that the Chamber of Commerce had submitted as a report identifying the proposed improvements and activities. That include the collection of the BIA funds requested for 2021-2022, and the cash balance from 2020-2021 as a result of the pandemic, and looking forward to the proposed expenditures with events, beautification, and marketing efforts to promote the BIA as they show here. If they collect any kind of revenue from events, in the past, it's been about $1,000 from Taco Day on Trafficway. The recommendation this evening is to adopt the draft resolution confirming the annual assessment for the Downtown Parking and Business Improvement Area for the fiscal year of 2021-2022. And are there any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? All right. Seeing then, we will open to public comment. You can raise your hand or press star nine if you're on the phone. And I will ask our city clerk if we have any public comment to be read into the record on this item. We do not. All right. Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment, and I will bring it back to council for conversation or a motion.
I should have asked, is Taco Day coming back? I've had such fun as a Taco Day judge.
We have started talking about it. So definitely is on the radar. We have a couple folks that are on Trafficway that are anxious to get started with that. So more to come. We meet tomorrow, actually, with Josh over at the Chamber.
Very good. Well, regardless of what decision the group makes about how they want to spend this money that they contribute, you know, and that we administer, I would move the draft resolution.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Councilmember Borbo. Roll call, please. Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Darius?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right. I think, let's see, we are at 7:43. Why don't we take a brief break before we go into the budget? Because that's our last, last item, but it's not huge. But let's take a break just in case. So 7:43, why don't we come back at 7:50? Sound good? All right. Thanks. There we are. All right, so let's go ahead and reconvene and we are moving on to item C1, Management Report, which is our 2021, 2023 operating and capital budget. And we'll turn this over once again to Administrative Services Director, Ms. Jerry Rangel.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm very excited to bring the budget to you tonight. It has been quite a long journey since January of this year, just focusing on this, although it began really much earlier than this, but to kind of culminate in the document that you have for you tonight is very exciting. The city has a very comprehensive approach to budget development. Public engagement in the budget process is an important part and continuously ongoing dialogue between the council, the community, and staff. The existing city budget process is purposely structured to continuously receive public input on where funds are spent. In a typical budget year, there's a minimum of eight public meetings. Council understands the importance of transparency and the need to ensure that the public would have multiple opportunities to be, to provide input on the city's priorities and expenditure of tax measure funds and other city funds. For this cycle, therefore, the council expanded the process to a total of 20 public meetings. The kickoff was the January 12th budget meeting, and then there were nine study sessions, a council goal-setting sessions in February, the action plan review on the April 27th council meeting, six finance committee meetings, and then this meeting tonight for review and adoption of the budget. At the nine study sessions, over 130 attendees generated 150 pages of input. This information was provided to the council and the public for the council's goal-setting sessions. From there, four key priorities were established, and these priorities drove the development of the budget. Those are economic and community vibrancy, fiscal and infrastructure efficiency and sustainability, ensuring public safety and providing exceptional city services, and quality of life. The council will adopt the goal implementation action plan at tonight's meeting along with the budget, which includes resources that will be used for the furtherance of council There are a number of important community issues that were considered throughout the development of this budget. High on everyone's list, of course, is Measure D20, the additional one cent sales tax that the voters passed last November and became effective April 1st. Revenue from the Measure D20 allows the city to fund many of the key priorities. A list on page A13 of the budget outlines the strategic priorities that are possible to fund due to the revenues from this new measure. Among them are things like additional public safety staffing, our team, equipment, vehicles, and the initial stages of replacement of fire station number one. On this list before you, broadband and the American Rescue Plan are also community issues. However, those are issues to kind of keep an eye on and to look at as we move forward. There's no activity or funding related to these two items in this two-year budget plan. The general fund is the city's primary operating fund. General fund revenues, such as property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, service fees, and interest, are all deposited into the general fund and then used for general fund expenses such as for police officers, public works, engineering, zoo animal food, parks water, recreation supplies, firefighters, and office supplies. Although we track the amount of each type of revenue that's received, once those revenues are deposited into the general fund bucket, they become a collective source we call general fund balance. Out of that general fund balance, out of the bucket, if you will, we are able to pay general fund expenses. There's no direct correlation, one-to-one, dollar for dollar, for what we spend out of the general fund balance. The sales tax measure F14 funds are part of general fund, however, in order to be as transparent as possible about the receipts and the expenses of F14 funds on the roads, we have separated those funds out for budgeting purposes, and all of tonight's discussions regarding the general fund will not include F14 funds. Those F14 funds are included in the general fund for financial statement reporting purposes. The new sales tax measure D20, however, are included in the general fund and are included in tonight's discussion for budgeting purposes. This pie chart represents the general fund revenue. With the addition of sales tax measure D20, a Tascadero is now expected to receive about 39% of the general fund revenue from property tax. Property taxes are based on the underlying property values and are the most stable of the revenue sources. Current year-secured property taxes are those taxes based on the assessed valuation of property as of January 1st of each year, and usually represent about 65% to 75% of the city's total property tax revenue. Current secured are projected to increase about 4.2% next year and about 3.7% the following year. Overall, property tax revenues are projected at 11.2 million in 2022, 2122, and 11.6 million in 2223. Sales tax is an inherently volatile revenue source, and it is significantly influenced by the state of the local and national economies. Included in the Measure D20 revenue, including Measure D20 revenue, sales tax revenue is projected to be about 34% of total general fund revenue. The city has seen modest sales tax growth over the last decade or so. More recently, there have been some significant changes. COVID-19 negatively impacted the city's typical Bradley Burns-based sales tax receipts. However, partially offsetting those decreases were increases due to Assembly Bill 147, or AB 147. AB 147 expanded the collection of sales and use tax to many internet-based purchases, and therefore added new revenue that was previously not subject to collection. These funds are collected in state and local pools and allocated out to the jurisdictions. In this budget cycle, the pool revenue is estimated to be around 24% of the Bradley Burns sales tax revenue. Bradley Burns revenue is expected to be about 4.5 million in 2122 and about 4.7 million in 2223. The bigger change to the revenue picture is the addition of the one-cent Measure D20. This revenue source became effective earlier this year and is projected to generate about 5.2 million in fiscal year 2122 and about 5.4 in 2223. There are some other revenues, including transient, transient occupancy tax, franchise fees, building permit activity, and service fees, among others. TOT had recently seen increases with the council's emphasis on promotion and economic growth and the T-bid that we just heard about. However, TOT revenue was negatively affected by the travel restrictions and the stay-at-home orders due to COVID. Revenues are recovering, and TOT is projected to be about 1.5 million in each of the next fiscal years. Franchise fees are a tax charged on cable, electric, garbage, natural gas, wastewater, recycling, and landfill. These are based on the revenue collected by each of these entities charged. Franchise fees revenues are about 1.2 million a year and are expected to be fairly flat. Building permit activity is expected to remain steady throughout this budget cycle and beyond, with lots of large projects in some stage of development right now. Service fee revenues encompass many of the different reimbursable costs for the city-provided services. These revenues are projected to be right around 2 million in each of the next two fiscal years. Employee services are the backbone of the community. The city is a service organization, so the largest part of the general fund expenditures is dedicated to employee services. 65% of the average general fund expenditures for '21 through '23 will go toward the cost of the employees. This is very typical for a city government. Employees are grouped into six different categories or bargaining units. The city is currently in negotiations with all bargaining units. Employee services in this budget does include the addition of five police officers, one public safety dispatcher, confirmation of a fire battalion chief from a temporary two-year position to a permanent position, and a website social media technician. Operations costs are expected, are expenditures related to regular ongoing operations of the departments, including supplies, tools, utilities, insurance, contract services, and other similar costs. These budgets were cut back to make it through the Great Recession, and they've increased slowly over the years, but as the costs of business continue to rise, those levels were not sustainable. The operations target for this budget was 2% increase in each of the fiscal years. Department had submitted what we call supplemental budget requests for items that were needed but cannot be accommodated in the existing budgets. These $25 million in requests were whittled down to fit into the budget that you have tonight. General fund operating expenses are projected to be 7.7 million in '2122 and 8 million in 2223. Special and capital projects are costs that are either a typical expense or just not part of the city's regular operations. They are one-time expenditures that are evaluated during each budget cycle and funded to the extent possible. This cycle, special and capital projects are budgeted at 3.8 million in '2122 and 2.1 million in 2223. The funded supplementals that are included in the employee services, operations, and special and capital projects are detailed in two different lists in the budget. The Measure D20 funded items are on page A13, and otherwise funded through general funds items are on pages A29 and 30. This is a list of those items that are on page A13. These are funded with Measure D20 funds. All of these items in purple font on this list, the majority of all of these items, as you can see, are for public safety. In fact, 100% of the items funded for the remainder of the current fiscal year are related to public safety, as are 80% of next year's items and 75% of the year after that. A full 87% of all the D20 funds for these three-year period are allocated to public safety, public works, and infrastructure. This list is similar to what we discussed in the April 27th council meeting, as well as at many of the finance committee meetings. As you can see, this list includes the police staffing that we talked about earlier, four officers plus one dispatcher, plus the our team, which includes another police officer in contract with a mental health professional, a new CAD RMS replacement system for the police department, handheld police radios, battalion chief, fire station one rebuild, so a portion of the money in these next two years, and then ongoing funding as we built that into our long-term strategy. Increases to the fire operations budgets, zone haven maintenance, emergency planning, fire radio repeaters, fire radios, replacement with a used ambulance for our current used ambulance, jaws of life, heart monitor modems, other fire equipment replacement deficits, chainsaws, repairs to fire station roof, station number two roof, vehicle replacement increases, compensation increases for public safety, vehicle reserve deficits, annual quick equipment reserves, equipment reserves for the radio repeater and for other public safety deficits, and public works radio repeater, vegetation management, camp cleanups, trash community clamp. There's a lot of stuff on here that we were able to fund due to Measure D20. So this is exciting news. This is the list of D20 only, and again, this is on page A13 of your budget. For those items that are from the general fund but not funded through D20, those are on pages A29 and A30. Since 1998, the city has worked diligently to put aside reserves for the replacement of building, equipment, vehicles, and technology to be able to replace them as necessary. During the Great Recession, many of these replacement allocations were put on hold in order to make ends meet. Since then, the city's been trying to build those up again. Putting away money in these reserve accounts helps us to have funding available for replacement when the need arises. This budget plan resumes the annual replacement funding for the 20-plus-year-life vehicles. This includes those vehicles like fire engines, the aerial ladder truck, and heavy streets equipment. Now that this reserve is fully funded again, there will be money available to purchase replacement vehicles like fire engines at the end of the vehicle's useful lives. In fact, this budget plan has a replacement of a wildland fire engine in fiscal, fiscal year 2223 using those reserve funds. Funding for vehicles other than the 20-plus-year-life ones are fully funded, and the annual reserve was also increased to more accurately capture the current replacement cost of the number of these vehicles actually being used by staff. Funding for equipment replacement also has resumed, with substantial funding for fire-related equipment. The implementation of the asset management system, which will give us a better understanding of citywide equipment assets and ideas for expanding this replacement reserve in the future. Funding for replacement of technology is also fully funded. This budget also sets aside a modest amount for building repairs and replacement and includes the funding for $750,000 a year to rebuild the fire station. Now, while $750,000 won't rebuild it, that in the early years is really planned to kind of the, the design process, planning and design, and then in future years, that amount would go toward debt service. Targeted net income was really a key factor in developing the budget, as current and future fiscal sustainability is a key priority. The chart on page A27, which you see here, it, it kind of explains all of that. Sometimes the flow of revenue in and expenses out doesn't always match, and there, that's fine, as long as there is a really good reason for that to be the case, and we have a good understanding of the long-term implications of that. Fiscal years 20, I'm sorry, '21, '22, and '22, '23 are good examples of this. The net losses in these years are really just timing differences of revenue in and expenses out. The city accumulates funds in one year and may spend them in another, like in the case of the one-time funding received through Senate Bill 1090 or SB 1090, as related to the economic stimulus for the closure of PG&E's Diablo Power Plant. The council authorized the use of these funds to establish a new deputy community development director of economic development and long-range planning, and for also for the expansion of the Tascadero Chamber of Commerce bridge works projects. Those one-time funds were received in fiscal year 1920 and are now included in the available balance of the general fund. Spending these funds would require use of reserves, since the SB 1090 funds are being held in those reserves. Additionally, encumbrances and approved capital projects that were included in fiscal year 2122 budget that won't be spent in that fiscal year are carried forward into the next fiscal year. Another adjustment is the expense of the general plan update. Council has approved using general fund reserves to pay the cost of the general plan update, although we're still looking for grants, and in the event that we receive a grant, that would be funded by a grant program instead. Sales tax measure D20 funds is another example of this. Sales tax measure D twenty funds is another example of this. The new sales tax rate became effective April first, and the city is projecting almost one point three million in revenues for this fiscal year. Not all of this revenue will be spent before June thirtieth and will become part of the available balance for use next year. While the seven-year projection shows a net income of, or a net loss of, uh, one point nine million in twenty-one, twenty-two, and about seven hundred and twenty thousand in twenty-two, twenty-three, these are in line with the targeted net income as shown in the adjustment worksheet here and on page A twenty-seven of the budget. I know this is really small to read, but I just want to bring your awareness to it that, um, this is our famous page B eleven. Um, this is our seven-year projection. And having a projection like this as a longer-term shot versus just the two-year budget really lets us look ahead and make sure that we have a solid and sustainable plan now and for the future. It's also important to continually monitor the level of reserves to ensure that there are available funds for the future. Page B eleven does include activity from measure D twenty, but does not include the activity from measure F fourteen. This graph shows the available general fund reserves as a percentage of general fund revenue. The council's general policy is to keep the percentage at or above twenty percent, the horizontal line you see there. The seven-year projection estimates that we will not drop below twenty-five point nine percent for the next seven years. The current projections are compliant with the council's reserve policy. And again, these do not include sales tax measure F fourteen. And as always, the city will continue to monitor and revise this in order to ensure that adequate reserves remain in place. Pages G eleven through G fourteen of the budget, uh, list that all of the capital projects proposed in this two-year budget cycle. Over forty-five million in projects are included with road projects, bridge replacement, and wastewater projects among the largest. There are also a number of other projects, including, um, the fire station one that we have previously discussed. Sales tax measure F fourteen funds are included in the city's budget separate from the, the general fund, uh, for clarity and transparency. A complete list of the roads that are scheduled for some level of repairs are listed in the budget document beginning on page F two. Revenues are expected to be five point four million over this budget cycle, and expenses are projected to be eight point three million. Expenses are more than the revenues due to the fact that there are, again, some of these timing differences, and there were savings in prior projects, and those funds are being used for new funds in this project, uh, in this cycle. Through the use of measure F fourteen funds, staff has been able to use the critical point management methodology to improve the condition of the city's roads. This has been successful, and the city's seen an increase in the pavement condition index from forty-seven to fifty. It's great news. The fiscal strategy has really provided the city a strong framework from which to operate. The strategy has allowed the city to maintain stable service levels, even in the face of twists and turns in the economy. The sales tax measure D twenty is providing vital city services that further the four key priorities. And even with all of this, the budget is lean and smart and makes the best of our limited resources. General fund reserves remain sufficient even into the long term. This budget provides the organization with the direction and tools necessary to pursue the key priorities and help the city continue to thrive. We wouldn't be able to present this plan tonight without the terrific cooperation of all of the council, the finance committee, the city's dedicated and hard-working staff. I appreciate all of the hard work everybody's put in. Most of all, I'd like to thank the members of the community for sharing their time and input that's been so invaluable in developing all of this. We have a great community here, and it shows. Um, and then I'd just like to make a couple of, um, call your attention to a couple of items. There are some clerical adjustments. And these are minor, um, these are more kind of, um, summary items often that roll up. Um, they don't affect the funding or the intention of the funding. Um, for example, on page D twenty, twenty-one, I'm sorry, um, is a, a listing of our, general fund by, um, by line item, and we have the right amount here, twenty-five thousand, but we put the wrong, um, reference here, restroom upgrades, which was incorrect. However, on page, uh, E eighty-eight of your budget, this item is correct. Um, similar here on page one oh five, this should not read backhoe trailer. It should read repeater and other equipment. Again, this is reported correctly on page E one oh three. And, um, same with the wastewater. This should read, um, generator for lift stations for eleven, fourteen, and fifteen, um, instead of lift station number six. And this is listed correctly on pages G thirteen and G seventeen. So the finance committee has reviewed all of the, um, the correct pages on these. So I feel that these are just clerical cleanups that we'd like to resolve for the final product. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. I think my biggest question is how do you have only four clerical cleanups in a budget that looks like this? That's quite impressive. So thank you so much, um, and to echo, uh, your, your thanks to the community. There were so many of you that came out during the D twenty meetings during strategic planning and just really involved yourself in this whole process and gave your input, and we are so appreciative of that. Uh, we know that you are busy, whether it's work, it's family, all of your commitments, and we thank you for engaging in your community, with your community in this way, because it's so vitally important. As I said, we've got a budget that looks like this. We have a finance committee, uh, that has thoroughly combed through it, and I want to thank, uh, both, uh, council member Borbo as the chair of that committee and council member Daris, uh, for their service to that committee, because I know it's a lot of time out of your schedule, so thank you for doing that. Uh, and I will ask you, um, as we move into this, if there's any comments that you want to make. Uh, for those of you in the public who have not yet looked at the budget, or may, maybe you've seen pieces of it. Uh, if you would like to take a look at it, it is on the website right now, the draft budget. You can go to atascadero.org and the search just type budget. And one of the first things that comes up, you click on budget and it'll take you to a page. It's probably an easier way to get it to it. This is just the way I get to it. Uh, and it has all the budgets on there, and it has the draft one there. Uh, one of the best, um, you know, things if you want to look through is the A section, A as in Atascadero. I was about to say apple. I had to correct myself, Atascadero. Uh, and it is, you know, thirty-some odd pages, but it's really a nice summary, a lot of what our director just talked about, but you can peruse that. Um, you know, B, you'll look through, uh, general fund, um, which is, you know, quite the one you're usually thinking about. B eleven particularly is that small print page, so mark B eleven down and go take a look at that. All that to say, there's a lot of information here. Any questions, reach out to us. We are happy to answer those anytime. Uh, but it's a, it's a pretty big document, and we're not going to go through it line by line tonight. We're here to say we've gone through it line by line, and we're ready to pass this budget, uh, with, of course, public input and see where we, see where we go from here. Uh, with that, I would like to turn it over to council member, uh, Borbo as chair of the finance committee, and, uh, see if you would have anything you'd like to share or say to us.
Uh, well, thank you, Mayor. Um, and yes, you know, we had numerous meetings, as Jerry mentioned, and we did go through pretty much every page, and we asked a lot of questions. Uh, it was also not just myself and council member Doris, but our city treasurer, Jerry Seabuck, who, as you know, was a Slow County Auditor Controller, so brings a wealth of knowledge and asks a lot of good questions as well. So we have gone through this, uh, we asked a lot of questions. The staff did a very good job of being able to answer those. Uh, you know, we found a few things here and there, and that, uh, they, um, you know, quickly adjusted. Um, and, uh, I would just reiterate what, uh, Jerry Rangell mentioned in terms of the, the D twenty summary on page A thirteen. Uh, she had a slide on that, uh, because I really wanted to make clear to people, uh, um, you know, this is what we decided to do ultimately with D twenty funds. So people want to know, hey, what did you do with all that additional sales tax dollars we voted for? This is the answer here, and the key thing there in, in going to part of our discussion earlier this evening that you addressed very well is uh, additional police staffing, really a key, a key indicator. And I think really the hands-on support of our police department and what they really need to, uh, continue doing a great job, because certainly without intent, over the years, um, we have effectively been defunding our, our police department because we've grown in population and not been able to grow our police department because we're a low revenue, we've been a low-revenue city. And so we, you know, right here, uh, we told folks that one of the purposes of D twenty would be to support, um, emergency service and services, and particularly police staffing, and this is where it shows up, right here. And along with all these other items that are listed. That's a key thing, I think, when people are interested, that this slide or page A thirteen will be a page they'll want to look at. Um, I'd also note in, in the staff report very beginning, and maybe it's just me as a finance guy like you, I noted that, um, I thought maybe some, uh, members of the public on our staff report would go, gee, you're, you're revenues are forty-eight and fifty-one million respectively for the next two years, but your expenditures are going to be sixty-three and fifty-nine million. That sounds like a, a lot of, you know, additional spending. And it is, but a lot of that is, of course, or that huge difference is capital gains expenditures on projects that are long overdue and using, uh, reserves that have built up in specific funds for the purposes of, of, uh, capital projects. And that's all, that's a good news story, um, that we're spending on things we've, uh, we've needed to do for a while. Uh, so there's that, and then on the, um, B eleven that you mentioned, Mayor, is kind of a it's, it's in small print, but it's a, it's a good slide that summarizes the financial condition. Jerry had a slide in here about our reserve percentages, and I, I noticed the percentage dropped substantially in this coming year, but that's because our revenues and expenditures have gone up substantially. So if you have a ten million dollar reserve, it's not, it does, percentage-wise, it's not as big. On, right here, you see this drop, and, uh, that's because, you know, like I said, if you have a ten million dollar reserve, and that's forty percent of twenty-four million, um, it's not forty percent of thirty million. And so, uh, that is not, uh, you know, if this was a normal year, that might, might be an alarming drop in the level of reserves, but it is not at all, uh, in this case. So, uh, you know, um, I think those are just some important points I wanted to, to point out about the overall thing. And, and yeah, it, this, putting this kind of thing together takes a lot of work by Jerry and her staff. Um, and not just because of all the questions we ask. It just takes a lot of work, and not just on Jerry's staff, but all the departments have to come together and, and work with Jerry to make sure this all balances out. Uh, you know, across the different pages, et cetera. So I think we can all be, uh, you know, pretty proud of this budget, what it shows our priorities are, and and also shows that we're a well-managed, uh, city financially.
Thank you for, uh, pointing that out about the fund reserves. And a, another thing too, and you'll remember there have been times in the past where we have wanted to transfer from and have transferred from our general fund reserves to building reserves or vehicle reserves. And unfortunately, the way governmental accounting works, that looks like an expense, and then it looks like you have a, a loss for that year, when what you really did is you said, let's take this general fund reserve and put this over to vehicle or building reserve. So it's just odd the way, you know, the way fund accounting.
Budgets can be not just confusing, but a little bit distorting sometimes, or give you a kind of a misrepresentation on occasion. In, in terms of, you see like, like on a chart like this, you kind of get the misrepresentation that your reserves are plummeting or something, and that's not the case.
Right. And then I would just ask, uh, council member Daris also, thank you. This was your first time, uh, serving on a committee, and if there's anything that you wanted to, to say or highlight.
Well, I think Charles said it best, uh, with, with his, his analysis of, of what we went through and, and, uh, and everything that we had to do. But most importantly, Jerry and, and, and her staff and, and, uh, and Rochelle and everything. I, I'm really quite impressed with the level of detail that went into this thing and all the work that they did. And, uh, and like you said, Mayor Moreno, how could there only be four corrections that you have to make in a big book like this? So that's, that's, it was really quite impressive, and, uh, and, you know, I'm, I'm not a finance guy in, in my background necessarily. I'm not afraid of the numbers, but man, the level of detail that went through this is, is really, uh, it's eye-opening and impressive that you, the, the things that you caught. So I'm happy to be a part of it. I learned a lot, and thank you so much for all your hard work. And, and it's, uh, it's nice to be able to accomplish something like this with the, the small budget that we do have and everything that we have to do. So it's, uh, uh, thank you again for, for all your hard work.
Well said. Uh, do we have any questions of council, council member, or of council, of staff, council member Funk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I too would like to, uh, join my colleagues in thanking you, Jerry, and the whole team for this, for this, you know, incredible budget. It, you know, it's a ton of work, and you've been working on this for, for months and months, you know, long before we started doing this discussion, discussions on D twenty in January, uh, trying to understand what that would mean and, and how we would go forward. And what I see in this is a really thoughtful attention to the, uh, requests our community made of us for the services they need, and for the things that will let them feel safe in this community, and give them a quality of life that they enjoy. I see a really thoughtful attention to the, the priorities and strategies established by council in our cooperative effort together with the five of us and with, with staff to, you know, craft this. And, um, and I just want to check in the, in the, uh, investments, I know, we're, as we set aside money in funds, that then you're used to replace vehicles. That can be hard for people follow. Are we setting aside the money in this budget so that all of our older fire vehicles can be replaced when they need to be replaced?
Yes, we are. Happy to, to say we, we have resumed all of that funding, and all of our vehicle funding is, um, fully funded now.
That's a huge change.
It's huge.
A big, big step of responsibility, uh, by this council and, and the staff, and, and by our community in stepping up to make that funding possible. Um, I also, you know, noted that, now there, on page A thirteen, you've got, what, thirty-five items here? And the top, and, and many of them are, are checked off in a column that say fiscal strategies, and others are in public safety and expenditure, and some others and a couple of others. But as I looked at that, you know, the top twenty-eight items of those thirty-five items are all public safety items. Is that correct? Or they're related to public safety?
That is correct, and that is the, um, purple font items that are, are on this list here. You're right. That's, that's a big percentage of them.
Great, thank you. Okay, a couple other things. Um, on page A nineteen, and you mentioned in your report that we don't have money in this particular budget for doing anything with broadband. Am I correct in recalling that the council previously direct allocated, um, a substantial amount from the, Diablo Canyon, you know, monies, the SB ten, ten, whatever it is, um, that the Diablo Canyon monies to, uh, for broadband.
You are correct about that. We don't have a project identified in this budget for that, but as soon as, um, that gets kind of sorted out, we'll bring that back to council.
Okay, great. Um, and then a couple, just a few things as we go through, uh, on D four. Um, I see that we have, um, a, an increase in the twenty-twenty-one year. Um, we've got a, we've got four hundred and forty thousand or so in, um, community development block grant money. And I don't recall getting that much in any one year. Uh, is that strictly a tiny issue, that the projects that we've approved in prior years? Because we've approved more than twenty thousand dollars a year, um, in earlier years. Uh, is it just that this is the year in which we're spending that money, and therefore that's, that's where it's going on?
You're exactly right about that. So we recognize that when we spend those, and there's that big project down the trafficway going on right now. So that's essentially what that is. So that's essentially what that is.
Okay, great, thanks. And then on page B sixteen in the general fund, there's a increase of a couple hundred thousands or so in city council expenses. Is that for the audio visual improvements to the council chamber? So we can continue to have both live and, and just continue to broadcast our meetings in a quality way and, and and have public input from a variety of sessions?
I'm sorry, I missed the page number on that, Councilmember?
B sixteen, Bev and Baker. That's the first line on B sixteen of the general fund expenditures by function.
I want to jump in here and say yes, Susan. We, we, we looked at that and yeah, it is specifically listed when you get down to the department budget under, under city council. A significant revamp of two hun- two hundred plus K of, of, you know, the setup within the city council chambers is in terms of being able to, you know, get, get with twenty twenty one technology as far as being able to simultaneously meet in person and do zooming from the chambers, you know, and other, other technical things I couldn't begin to describe.
And I think just the upgrades that are needed even without needing to zoom and do all of those were at that point where we're, you know, eight years into this building and, and technology is changing like that.
Great, thank you. I, I did want to make sure people knew that we're not spending that all on ourselves. We're spending, we're spending it to get, getting connected with, connected with you all. In our, in our police department, and I'm now, I've, I've jumped all the way to E twenty nine. And I noticed within our professional development that things got really, that, that that really dropped a lot in the twenty twenty one timeframe. And then it's going to be picking up at a substantially higher level in the next couple of years. Is that mostly the, were the ability for our folks to do training, was that affected by COVID?
I believe they did have a lot of the travel to different locations was affected by COVID and, and therefore they could, did what they could virtually. And there were a few trainings, I think, but I think you're right. It definitely was affected. We are trying to get back into all of that. I think Chief and I looked at this pretty carefully and we felt pretty confident in the numbers. In the event that he needed to move anything around, he could move a little bit in his budget around if he found that that wasn't quite sufficient.
Okay, great. And, and are we then with this budget prepared so that we can fund crisis intervention training for all of our police staff? That's something that, that the police, the chief had mentioned that, you know, wanting to do.
Chief, did you want to take that one?
Sure, I, I can take care of that. Actually, a crisis prevention training is funded free by the county. So it's in zero cost to the department for that, so we appreciate that. It's just a matter, the classes were shut down during COVID, so now that COVID's being tampered a little bit, the classes are starting to open up, so we're going to have officers attending it more frequently.
Great, thank you, Chief. And then, let's see. Got that one, okay. So I just, as a last comment here, want to note, as we, as we were looking at A thirteen and, and the way that so many of our, our priorities are directed at our police and our fire, which is what we promised to do, to prioritize those and what people asked for. That this is a, you know, it's not, we're not talking about a thin blue line. We're talking about a thick green line that we are wrapping around our, our police department of the funding that they need to be able to be successful in their work. So I thank you for the thoughtful attention that's in this budget to seeing that those priorities are carried out.
Mayor Potem Newsome?
I think my fellow council members were very thorough in their questions. I guess at this point, I just want to say thank you to the staff for all their time that they have invested in really hoping to navigate the priorities we established as well as making sure that we have covered every base. So thank you again for all your effort.
And Councilmember Borbo, did I see your hand up?
Yes, thank you. And Councilmember Funk, if you go to E three, it'll answer your question about that, your earlier question. But no, I wanted to also comment on the fact that what this budget does not include though is any of the stimulus or recovery act or whatever it's been called, funding that we anticipate getting. And so that additional funding, I think there's a webinar tomorrow on, on how some of that will be distributed and limitations on it and et cetera. Anyway, there, there's going to be some additional funding coming from that avenue that's not included in, in this budget document that will also enable us to do some good things. And that'll come back to council at some point in time.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up to public comment and anybody, any members of the public wishing to comment, please raise your hand at the bottom of the screen or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. I will start with Mr. Oslin.
Okay, good evening, council, once again. I was fortunate to participate in some of the budget meetings. And I'm very impressed with Jerry and I'm thrilled that we have money in the budget to increase staff wages and police wages and fire wages to keep good staff here in Atascadero. Retention is very important. What I have always said is that we are a very fiscally responsible city. This budget proves it. It's actually a very conservative budget. And if things are done right, we may have a surplus, especially of the D twenty funds. This is very conservative based on where things were with COVID, this year's budget and the next two years. With that being said, the next phase of this is that I'm thrilled how the D twenty funds are being distributed. I did reach out to our chief of police to make sure that he was happy with it. And he said it is a very good budget, a very solid budget. Our fire department is very thrilled with what's going on as well. Of course, we would always like more, but we don't have the funding. But this is a big, big step in the right direction for retention of our valuable emergency services and our staff of this city. And I really appreciate being involved in the budget process. And again, hats off to Jerry and her staff, but Jerry is remarkable and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oslin. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Luke, do we have any callers that have raised their hand?
We do not.
And I'll ask our city clerk if we have any public comment to be read into the record on this item.
We do not.
Okay, I see no other public comment. We will bring it back to the council for, for a motion. And I will just say, I thank you to Mr. Oslin and I know Ms. Pierce is on the line here. She, Mrs. Narros, there are several of you I see here in the, in the webinar tonight, webinar tonight at our meeting. I don't even know how to talk about this, right? At our meeting tonight, who participated. And so we really appreciate you and all of you who came out in any way to, to be a part of this process. And not enough thanks and kudos can go to Director Rangel, of course, to our city manager, to all departments that are involved, to your entire department. This is just tremendous work, so thank you. And with that, I will look to maybe our finance committee if they might want to make a motion.
Yes, I will, I will move that we adopt the draft budget resolutions listed in our staff report. So that would be adopting the budgets for twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three. Adopting resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget. Adopting the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two annual spending limit. Resolution reaffirming the necessity of development impact fees and our draft action plan implementing council goals.
Thank you. And does that, for both the maker of the motion and the second, will that include the changes indicated by Director Rangel in her report?
Yes, that includes the mayor administrative clarifications made in her presentation.
Yes, agreed.
All right, thank you. We've got a motion by Councilmember Borbo and a second by Councilmember Derris. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Derris?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Newsome?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
All right, now Jerry, go home and get some sleep. She's like, what is that? Thank you. We are on to our council announcements and committee reports. And so I will just kind of go on my screen here through the, through the Hollywood squares. And I'll start with Councilmember Derris.
Thank you. Yeah, the Mayor Pollution Control District met, I think it was two weeks ago. And I'm not prepared to give a report on exactly what we talked about because it was a couple of weeks ago and I was focusing on a lot of other stuff. But anyhow, we met, we're meeting again in a couple of weeks as well. So continuing with that, that's it.
Nothing to report then, all right, thank you. Mayor Potem Newsome?
Let's go get some sleep, I started to yawn. And Visit Slocow Advisory Committee met on June third. We discussed the COVID nineteen recovery and how they're starting to show an increase in travelers and T O T. No design review committees or other committees meeting at this time.
And Councilmember Borbo?
Yes, no more finance committee meetings. But tomorrow, the Integrated Waste Management Authority meets and so I have nothing else to report right now.
Did you have anything to report out from the Slocog meeting?
Oh.
Preciously sat in for me as my alternate.
No, they, they have a lot of items on the consent calendar past that. There was some, it was just some discussion about some legislation where, you know, Slocog was taking a position on, but no, nothing of great significance for the whole council, although I should give you a, I should have called and given you a rundown. So I, we can still do that.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Funk?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we had a meeting earlier today of the Homeless Services Oversight Council, a special meeting to approve signing of a memorandum, memorandum of understanding that will implement a, a wonderful opportunity you received as a result of the March passage federally of the American Recovery Act. The name I'm not quite right, but the, the major COVID bill. And this will allow us to get a hundred and fifty six additional housing vouchers that are specially targeted towards people who are homeless, who might be vulnerable COVID wise, who might be escaping domestic violence or other danger situations. And to get them into permanent housing with, with a support. This is a voucher that they're able to take to a landlord and have pay, make up the difference between what they can pay and the rent of the unit. And HUD is, is allowed a little higher rent payment. So we're hoping that more landlords will be willing to cooperate and make units available. It's hard because we have a very tight market. There aren't that many empty units around. But we appreciate landlords making the effort to, to take these tenants who will come with support from organizations like Echo, who can help them be good tenants. And there are also some money for some incentives yet to be determined for landlords to help encourage landlords to participate. Note also that when you have this kind of a program, it means that people who are coming out of homelessness back into the house community are scattered around the community and they're not all hanging out in one place and freaking out the neighbors. So that's, we've got another meeting, a regular meeting of the H SOC Executive Committee that'll be happening next week.
Thank you. I have, let's see, we're going to be dark for Slocog and RTA in July. I don't think that's happened my entire time on this board. So like, wow, it's like a little summer vacation for everyone. We are going to be having our mayor's meeting next week. It will be our first in-person one since March of twenty twenty. So looking forward to that in being hosted by the City of San Luis Obispo. And I heard from Assemblyman Cunningham today that Department of Finance announced that they're going to be allocating those federal relief funds that all the cities have been eligible for. It looks like they're going to be doing half this fiscal year, half next fiscal year. And that the amount coming to the City of Atascadero looks to be about twenty five percent higher than we thought it was going to be. So this is good news for, for our community. And with that, I think I have, that's it. So now we are on to individual determinations or actions. And we have one on the agenda and that is Councilmember Derris. You're muted.
There you go, thank you. Thank you for this time. I appreciate being able to do this. So I'll try to keep it relatively simple, but you know, I, I've been thinking, you know, too often we forget to show appreciation for the people around us that, that are important to us. You know, it could be friends or family or even public works. After all, without them, our toilets wouldn't flush, right? So we've all had to live through difficult, the difficulties of the pandemic this past year. And we experienced it in a variety of ways. Additional events, however, have made it particularly difficult for some people to simply go to work. And I'm talking about our first responders, the men and women that keep us safe and rescue us from danger. Yeah, I kind of, kind of said that wrong. Anyway, the George Floyd incident has emboldened some people to vilify these, these heroes on a daily basis. And I kind of had a problem with that. And yes, it was an awful scene. It was very difficult to witness and never, ever should have happened. But I know in my heart that the narrative being cast against law enforcement and fire and rescue personnel as a whole could not be farther from the truth. We are safer and better off knowing that help and protection is just a phone call away. I am proud to say that I support law enforcement at every level. I am immensely grateful to all first responders. Without them, my time on this planet might have ended thirty four years ago. I have never forgotten that and I never will. As such, I never want my appreciation for our protectors and our rescuers to ever be questioned. And more importantly, I want the people of this community to know that I'm not alone with this sentiment. I'm not here to speak for, for my fellow council members and nor am I here to speak for any of the staff members or leaders in city hall. But I can say with confidence, I've seen firsthand a matched and unwavering gratitude of appreciation by all. In Atascadero, as we've shown tonight with our budget, our first responders are our number one priority. And I am confident in saying we are all on the same page. So at this time, I would like to ask my fellow council colleagues to please join me in directing staff to prepare a proclamation to be read at the next council meeting, thanking and appreciating the men and women that make Atascadero safe, secure and a great place to live. So with that, I say thank you and I'll yield back my time to Mayor Moreno.
I thank you, Councilmember Derris. And I, I really appreciate how you started out. I think all of us know that there are people in our lives that could use a lot more appreciation and, and being shown that on a regular basis. So thank you for that. And I certainly know as a, a member on, the longest standing member now on city council that without our staff, we're nothing. They are what, they are what make things possible. And, you know, whether it's, you know, first responders or, you know, somebody in finance making that possible for them to do their work, we appreciate them all. So with that, I will just look to my colleagues and, and see what your thoughts are on this subject.
Well, I, I think it's Well, I I think it's a fitting thing, especially in this time when our especially our police recently lost a colleague who used to work at the Tascadero Police Department that, you know, having a resolution that recognizes their service is would be would be fine. I, you know, I look at, and you know, I was a police volunteer, so I got to know police officers reasonably well here and and see them and frankly, just listen to their activities on a radio for two hour volunteer shift, running around doing graffiti. And it's it's always so impressive knowing that they have to respond to anything and everything. And I really think that you know, policing is is frankly, the most difficult job in America. I and I, you know, I think about that. I don't mean that it's hyperbole. It's an easy thing to say. But I really can't think of a more difficult job in America than being a police officer. Doesn't mean that there aren't some that, you know, abuse their authority or do it badly or what have you. That's part of the human condition and needs to be addressed. But I really can't think of a more difficult job. And so I think in my mind, it would be fine and appropriate for staff to draft a resolution honoring them. I think that'd be a fine thing to do.
Other council members, Councilmember Funk.
I I agree. I am very much in support of our police at this very challenging time and all our first responders. Because, because, you know, Detective Benedetti was a colleague for our fire department colleagues as well as our police department colleagues. And and I know that our folks are hurting right now. I also want us to be very mindful that the broad support we have in the community for our police, for the work that they do and in all that they bring to it is not inconsistent with wanting us to be attentive to what our community, like every community can learn from the systemic vulnerabilities that George Floyd's death at the hands of police did, you know, make so obvious to all of us that we're in such a painful way. And that we need to be attentive and that is to be mindful of that, to learn from that, to be asking ourselves to always find ways to be more just and and dignified and respectful in how how policing is accomplished in the community is not in any way inconsistent with our embracing and supporting our police, making sure that they have the funding they need to be able to do those important jobs well. And making sure that they know that their community appreciates the work they do to keep us safe. So I'm I'm comfortable with with this approach.
I'm Mayor Potem Newsom.
Mark, for bringing this up. My colleagues probably don't know, only a couple of you know, that after attending Benedetti's funeral, the next day was a most challenging day for me. I can imagine how our police department gets up every day and protects us and the challenges that they endure. I think all of us have shown our respect for our community, our first responders, and really truly appreciate for all that they sacrifice. Unfortunately, sometimes it takes these tragedies for everybody to come together as a community and realize what's important. And so with that, I'd kind of like to say that I thank you from the bottom of my heart and most of you already know that. That I think it's important to recognize our first responders. I think it's important to also come together as a community and recognize each other. We all bring strengths and come together as a community. Atascadero is a little different than most areas. We are respectful of each other and we are mindful for what we have and are thankful to those that help us achieve that every day. So I would love to have Masterson to say, you know, is this something that is going to improve our outcry of our support? I think he knows from me writing letters to the police department and every opportunity I get to step out there and really thank them for everything. I would like to see our first responders be acknowledged for all of the sacrifice and everything they do for us.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Since you asked about the chief, I will just ask the chief if there's anything that you would like to to say or any comments that you might have on this particular item.
Just trying to unmute. But I didn't get, so I didn't get the inevitable, you're muted. I just like to thank the council as a whole for considering a proclamation and for Mark to bring it forward. Mayor Potem Moreno sent an email to us that quite frankly, if I read, you wouldn't like to hear your chief sniffling. And I think those things mean a lot to us in the department and at the fire department and all of our first responders. Just to point out, I can honestly say our first responders, yes, we think about the the police department, the fire department, but quite often it's, as I was talking to somebody the other day, when we're out in the middle of the night on a sewer line breakage, it's us blocking the road and it's public works that's down in the trench dealing with less desirable things. So we consider them first responders for us as well because they frequently block roads for us when we're handling major incidents. So we at the city first responders collectively appreciate the the council's gesture in this and and I'm sure it won't go on deaf ears.
Thank you, Chief. And I will, just for the record, you said Mayor Potem Moreno. It was Mayor Potem Newsom, just so we make that clear, wrote that beautiful email.
It was one of the heathers.
Heathers and she included me as mayor and nobody else. So there was no, no violation. But yeah, I agree. There is, I had some Kleenex on hand, thankfully.
Yeah. So thank you. And yes, I would say the way the chief said, you know, first responders are including public works, certainly including dispatchers. There's a lot that goes into keeping us all safe and things that we just don't always see. Charles has seen a lot of it being being that volunteer. So yes, thank you, Councilmember Daris for bringing this forward. And because this was an agendized item, I do want to open it up for public comment. If there's any members of the public wishing to speak on this, I will do that now. You go ahead and raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen or you can press star nine on your phone. And I'm not seeing any. And I will ask our city clerk, is there any email that was written to be read into the record for this particular item?
There was not.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing none will close public comment and bring it back to council. And I think you've got a incredibly unanimous decision. Let's move forward with the proclamation for our first responders to present at our next council meeting. And thank you, yes, Councilmember Daris for bringing this forward.
All right. Yeah, thank you, everyone, for for your support. And I knew I could, I know I could count on this. It was a no brainer. As Charles said, and not hyperbole, this, it is a very difficult job. Some of you don't know, or maybe any of you don't know that long before I was injured, that was my path, my career path. And so I I I'm with them one hundred percent. This means a lot to me and I appreciate everybody helping out with this and and letting this go forward. So this is a very difficult time around the country and I think they deserve all the appreciation and support that they can possibly get. So thank you again.
Thank you. And now I will ask, are there any other individual determinations that are not on our agenda this evening? All right, seeing, hearing, none. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Adjourned to a special meeting tomorrow.
Yes, we have a special meeting. We're not adjourning to the special meeting, but yes, there is a special meeting tomorrow for those of you that are interested is the appeal of the mini storage project down at the Dove Creek area. And that will be at six o'clock tomorrow night, June ninth. And so any member, any members of the community wishing to attend that, you can come to that as well. So we might see you two days in a row. All right.
Good night, everybody.